Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of August 27, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Petron?
She's here.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
I guess so.
Okay, well, we're all here. So, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with item three, approval of the City Council Conference Minutes of June 25, 2019, City Council Goal Setting Retreat Minutes of July 26, 2019, and the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of August 13, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Wilson, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 4A, we will entertain a motion to allow ESGR to present the award, which is the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve ESGR Pro-Patria Award.
So moved. Second?
The motion on the floor is to allow ESGR to present the award. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been approved unanimously.
I'd like to ask Gary Foster, State Chairman of ESGR Oklahoma, to make a presentation. It's probably the train. Well, we're just going to move on right along. 4B, I'm going to proclaim the month of September 2019 as Assistance League Norman Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been approved. The proclamation passes unanimously.
Oklahoma proclaiming the month of September 2019 as Assistance League Norman Month in the city of Norman. Whereas the Assistance League Norman, a chartered chapter of National Assistance League, is an organization created to carry out a program of philanthropic work in the community; and whereas Assistance League Norman is celebrating its 45th year of service in the city of Norman; and whereas the Assistance League of Norman raises more than $200,000 annually to support its six philanthropic programs, Operation School Bill, Seniors R&amp;R, Care Kits, Bears for Children, Book of My Own, and Community Outreach; and whereas the Assistance League Norman buys local and supports the tax base of the city of Norman, which we all appreciate. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Assistance League Norman Month in the city of Norman, and call upon the entire citizenry of Norman to join the Assistance League Norman in support of the philanthropic program work. I'd like to recognize Stephanie Clinton and Judy Travis to the podium to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Good evening. I'm Judy. Stephanie, I think, is on the other side of the train track.
It's the train.
But since we travel in a pack, we always have at least one of us that will be able to stand up and speak for the group. Thank you very much for the proclamation. I hope that everyone here will be happy to join us on your way home from work on September the 18th for a little wine and cheese celebration of this 45th anniversary. This particular year not only recognizes 45 years of service, but it also recognizes that this is the 41st year of clothing children through Operation School Bill. Last year, we clothed 2,200 of the 8,000 children in the city that qualify and need the program. So, thank you all very much, and we'll see you.
Thank you so much. Item six is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 43 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Brenda's messing with me. Okay, item six, ordinance 1920-16 upon first reading, authorizing a special election on November 12, 2019, to submit to voters the question of approving or rejecting ordinance 1920-16, levying and assessing a sales tax of 1/8 of 1% accounted for in the Public Transportation and Parking Fund in addition to present city and state sales tax upon the gross proceeds or gross receipts derived from sales. The 1/8 of 1% sales tax to be used to support public transit systems and other lawful purposes related to public transit. To be effective on April 1, 2020, and ending upon the successful adoption and implementation of a dedicated sales tax levy sufficient to fund public bus operations and furtherance of the Regional Transportation Authority of Central Oklahoma. Item seven, approval of confirmation of nominees to the Norman Youth Council. Item eight, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of July 31, 2019. Item nine, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of July 2019. Item 10, submission of the City Manager's Change Order Report. Item 11, submission of the Public Safety Oversight Committee Annual Report. The next six items are the acceptance of temporary and permanent easements for the 36th Avenue Ride of Way Project. Item 12, 1920-4, a permanent roadway and drainage utility easement from Carroll Family LLC in the amount of $229,700. Item 13, easement 1920-5, acceptance of a permanent roadway drainage and utility easement from Raymond F. Egerton in the amount of $12,100. Item 14, temporary easement 1920-6, a temporary driveway easement donated by Raymond F. Egerton. Item 15, 1920-7, a permanent roadway drainage and utility easement from Euzubias Beltran Archbishop of the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City and his successors in office of the amount of $5,500. Item 16, 1920-8, a permanent roadway drainage and utility easement from All Saints Catholic School in the amount of $11,250. Item 17, 1920-9, a temporary driveway easement donated by All Saints Catholic School. The next three items are the acceptance of permanent easements for the University and Acres Intersection Project. Item 18, 1920-10, public sidewalk easement donated by Renell and Llewellyn Francois. Item 19, 1920-11, a permanent public roadway and sidewalk easement donated by Renell and Llewellyn Francois. Item 20, 1920-12, a permanent public sidewalk easement donated by Andrew Darks. Item 21, 1920-13, a temporary driveway easement donated by Archbishop of Catholic Archdiocese of Oklahoma and his successors in office for the 36th Avenue Ride of Way Project. Item 22, submission of Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Waterline Permit and reclaimed waterline permit for the 24-inch water transmission line from Timberdale Road and Chautauqua Avenue to Jenkins Avenue and Constitution Street located generally north of Imhoff Road and west of and along Jenkins Avenue. Item 23, submission of an Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Construction Permit for the Compost Facility Reuse Pump Station Project located adjacent to the water reclamation facility. Item 24, special claim 1920-2 submitted by Todd Bales in the amount of $1,550 for damage to his brick fence by a waterline maintenance crew while repairing a water main link at 4050 36th Avenue Northeast. Item 25, amendment number five to the contract with RJN Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $150,000, and extending the contract through August 30, 2020, to provide engineering, maintenance, repair, installation, and reporting services associated with permanent wastewater flow metering equipment at 18 locations throughout Norman. Item 26, amendment number one to the contract with Kabinist Engineering LLC, increasing the contract amount by $2,275 for a revised contract amount of $429,250 to provide additional professional engineering design services for the James Garner Avenue Project from Acre Street to Flood Avenue. Item 27, amendment number one to contract with PDG LLC doing business as Planning Design Group in an amount not to exceed $761,000 to provide additional professional architectural design services for the Park Maintenance Facility, Bus Service Maintenance Facility, and Public Safety Maintenance Facility to be located adjacent to the existing Fleet Maintenance Facility on the North Base property. Item 28, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with Central Contracting Services Incorporated for the Lake Hurst Drive Drainage Improvements Project. Item 29, change order number one to the contract with Construction Unlimited LLC, increasing the contract amount by $3,439.57 for a revised contract amount of $328,439.57 for the West Main Street Bridge over Ten Mile Flat Creek Project, final acceptance of the project, and budget transfer between project accounts. Item 30, change order number one to contract with PM Construction and Rehab LLC, decreasing the contract amount by $136,593.62 for a revised contract amount of $1,211,907.38 for the construction of FYE 2014 Sewer Maintenance Project Phase Two and final acceptance of the project. Item 31, amendment number one to the contract with Cardinal Engineering LLC, increasing the contract amount by $18,000 for a revised contract amount of $108,400 to provide additional engineering design bidding and construction management services for the Interstate Drive Waterline Replacement Project. Item 32, amendment number one to the contract with Integrity Energy Partners LLC, extending the contract term until December 31, 2019, to investigate the possibility of selling digester biogas and budget appropriation from the water reclamation fund balance. Item 32, amendment number two to the contract with Francis Solar LLC to add a second 15-year parking space lease agreement located at Goddard Avenue Compressed Natural Gas Fueling Facility site in order to install an electric vehicle charging station. Item 34, acceptance of bids and approval of a contract and associated bonds with Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $175,750.73 for the Legacy Park Parking Lot Construction Project and budget appropriation from the UMP TIF fund balance and budget transfer of project funds. Item 35, acceptance of bids and approval of a contract and associated bonds with Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,440,000 for the Urban Asphalt Pavement FYE 2020 Locations Project and adoption of a project agent resolution granting tax exempt status. Item 36, acceptance of bids and approvals of a contract and associated bonds with EMC Services LLC in the amount of $325,520 and a change order increasing the contract amount by $13,221.50 for a revised contract amount of $325,520 for the FYE 2020 Sidewalk Concrete Projects and adoption of a project agent resolution granting tax exempt status. Item 37, acceptance of bids and approval of a contract and associated bonds with Nash Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $467.56 for the McCall Drive Road Reconstruction Project and adoption of a project agent resolution granting tax exempt status. Item 38, contract with Anna Lab Corporation for the purpose of conducting laboratory services for the Utilities Department. Item 39, contract with Accurate Labs for the purpose of conducting laboratory services for the Utilities Department. Item 40, contract with Pace Analytical to conduct laboratory services for the Utilities Department. Item 41, contract with Frankfurt Short Bruza Associates in the amount of $1,980,800 to provide design services, which will include schematic design, design development, construction documents, and construction phase coordination for the Norman Forward Indoor Aquatic Center and Multisports Facility and the Senior Wellness Center. Item 42, resolution appropriating $15,000 from the Room Tax Fund Balance for the Norman Arts Council to be used for the Oklahoma Center for Nonprofit Standards for Excellence Training and Certifications for Norman Arts Organizations. And finally, item 43, resolution expressing support for a referendum petition which will give Oklahoma voters the opportunity to vote on the repeal of House Bill 2597 allowing permitless carry. The motion on the floor is to place items six through 43 on the consent docket. You may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place items six through 43 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Approve.
Second?
I'd like to recognize Linda Price from the Public Safety Oversight Committee to make a presentation on item 11.
Good evening. It's been a long time since I've been down here doing this. There are several things that we wanted to emphasize in our report to you for the past fiscal year. There are still some major issues to be addressed. One of the ones that we have been most concerned about is the implementation, the full implementation of the School Resource Officer Program. We do have officers in the high schools and the middle schools, but we really would like to get the officers into the elementary schools. It has had such a huge positive impact in the other schools. We'd like to see dedicated vehicles purchased for those SROs. Right now, they're having to go from the officers as they go into the SRO positions. Those are taken out of patrol and into the SRO positions, and it would be beneficial to get some so we could be able to at least backfill if they have to move forward. Also, the staffing and retention of communications officers has presented a very large problem. It is an ongoing problem. It's not just for us, but it certainly has been here, and we seem to be down three to four to five officers all of the time. It is in critical position because they're really the first line, the ones that answer the phone calls for us when we're all in need. Project status, we have delivered, have had delivered the fire department pumper truck. That was delivered in May, and another one has been ordered for delivery next year. We have completed the radio project. It is operational. Over a quarter of a million is expended in design and preparation for bidding of the Emergency Communications Center slash Emergency Operations Center, and we expect to be able to get it bid and hopefully get it going and, under construction, to be completed in 13 to 18 months. And then we also are really pleased that you approved positions for two emergency vehicle mechanics, which will allow the staff at Fleet to be able to have more people that could be permanently addressing emergency vehicles to get them back on the street more efficiently. In terms of finances, at the end of fiscal year 2019, we're still in the black in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. However, it is expected there will be a deficit in FYE 2020 and due to the completion of the budget to capital projects, and there are further details in the report, of course. Looking forward, we anticipate the construction of the Norman Emergency Communications Center, Emergency Operations Center. As I said, construction will last 13 to 18 months. We're hoping that that will be bid and start construction this year. We want to see the completion of the 16.5 million communication system, the hiring of those two emergency vehicle mechanics, delivery of the pumper truck, and complete implementation of the SRO program. And I do want to say that this is a brief review, but the important thing to remember is that the reason we did this, all of these things in terms of passing this sales tax, was so that we could enhance the public safety in Norman, and that is for police and fire. I have seen a huge change in the police department in my tenure here, and I see the outreach, the citizens' police academies, the Coffee with the Cop, the Police Athlete League. So many things are going on in our community as a result of having more officers able to do things and really communicate with our citizens. And with the acquisition of equipment and the building of new fire stations, we have certainly improved our capacity to fight fires efficiently in Norman, and the equipment has made a huge difference in the way they're able to handle their crews and to be more effective in fighting fires. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda.
My name is Lee Greenleaf, and I'm a member of the committee as well. Reason I come today is that four days ago, I just had a cardiac stent, but I wouldn't miss coming before this committee because of two aspects of our report. One is the communications system, a sixteen and a half million dollar system that right now is missing a major component that needs to be paid attention to, and that is what's called interoperability. That means that in time of emergency, we can talk with other communities, or other communities can talk with us. Things like Homeland Security, City of Moore, state police, all those things have to be seamless, and they are not. The second part is our grave concern over the safety of the children. This has been something that this council two years ago allowed us to have two more officers that the city is paying for, but at this time, the school has still not come up with the funds to address the needed members of the RSO. And we need the council to understand the seriousness of this position. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate you both for serving on that committee. Councilmember Scanlon?
I just want to take a minute and compliment the members of the committee on what I think is an excellent report. I've seen these before, and they tend to be a lot of bureaucratic mumbo jumbo filed to fill a square, essentially. This document has teeth. This document confronts us with the real challenges that police and fire have to deal with. So, my compliments to the hard work of all of the members of the committee, and I encourage you to keep our feet to the fire with regard to the communications officers, the SROs, whatever it may be. We need to hear from you. So, thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? I will make one comment. If you're going to stick around for the full meeting and have not signed the petition to put 2597 on the ballot, I have one with me. So, see you after the meeting. With that, Councilman Petron?
I just had a question on item number, I believe, 41, the contract for the Norman Forward projects.
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
So, in the staff report, it had said that it was really important to the consultant that we get community input. That was for the projects, but the contract itself doesn't have any, speak to that at all. And I was wondering what the process was going to be to get community input for the senior center, but it's the aquatics center and the multisport as well.
Sure. Appreciate the question. The scope of services is made a part of the contract through the first exhibit, I believe Exhibit A, and it is specifically listed in there about gathering public input. The exact methods of gathering the input are not determined yet, although we have talked to the consulting team about, we expect that to be substantial. The first thing we're going to do is meet with the ad hoc groups, or the ad hoc group for the senior center in this case in particular, and get input from them about various ways to go about gathering that input. And then, together with the consultant's recommendations and the input from the community, we'll go about probably a number of different ways to gather that input.
Okay. As a follow-up, at the retreat, we spoke about sending out postcards to all of the seniors, kind of feeding them to an online site of a questionnaire, and I think that all the council members were supportive of that. So, I would really hope that we can pass that along.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think it's important that we reach out to them. We don't just expect that they're going to reach out to us.
Sure.
They need to know that we want to build what they need.
Absolutely. We want to get all the input we can get.
Thank you.
Speaking of community input, we are actually having a public meeting tomorrow night, so I don't forget it later on to announce, for the skate park at Andrews Park. It'll be at 6:30 PM here. So, if you're, we are invested in community input in all of our Norman Forward projects. You're the ones paying for those projects, and we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to have your input heard. So, thank you, Councilmember Petron. Any other comments regarding the consent docket? Seeing none, councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been passed, and the consent docket passes unanimously.
Moving along with item 44, ordinance 1920-2, clarifying the duties of the Human Rights Commission and adding specific protections against discrimination and retaliation on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, or marital status, including marriage to a person of the same sex in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations. Adding promotion of education and awareness of the rights provided in the code, and submission of an annual report of complaints to City Council to the duties of the Human Rights Commission. Modifying the definition of age and adding new language to the definition of sexual harassment. Adding definitions of disability, discriminate or discrimination, gender identity or expression, and sexual orientation. Removing definitions of dwelling, employment, housing accommodation, lending institution, real estate broker, and handicap person. And amending the definition of employer to remove the minimum number of employees and renumbering remaining definitions. Adding a new section to provide a general prohibition of discrimination and retaliation. Providing specific employment and housing exceptions. Amending the section regarding the filing of complaints in the city clerk's office on a form approved by the Human Rights Commission. Clarifying and streamlining the Human Rights Commission's administrative review and resolution of complaints process, and adding a new section to preserve complainants' rights to pursue other administrative remedies and/or a private civil action. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Okay. I'd like to recognize Christina Bell, the Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I get started, I do want to just take this opportunity to thank several individuals. This is definitely the culmination of a lot of group effort, and I would like to recognize our Human Rights Commission, several members of which are here tonight for all of their hard work and working through this project. I'd also like to recognize Dawn Holliday, who is a local attorney who has litigated several civil rights litigation and has worked very closely with our office in reviewing our current ordinance and helping us look at changes that needed to be made and coming up with proposed language. And I'd also like to recognize Jacque McMahon, who I know you all are familiar with, our ADA technician, who has provided some great guidance in looking at this through the ADA disability protection pieces. So, what you're looking at tonight is amendments to Chapter 7, which is the city's Civil Rights Ordinance. The Civil Rights Ordinance was adopted by Ordinance 08687-2. It has been in place for several years. It currently prohibits discrimination against citizens based on race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, age, place of birth, and handicapped. It really hasn't been amended very much substantively since it was enacted in 8687. The last substantive change, other than increasing penalty ranges as allowed by state law, was in May 14 of 1996, when council adopted an ordinance that added familiar status as a protected class, which was based on a head recommendation which regulates federal housing requirements. The Civil Rights Ordinance does pertain to three different areas, which are employment, housing, and public accommodations. The initial action that kind of started us looking at the Civil Rights Ordinance was actually a request submitted by a local advocacy group for LGBTQ issues, Norman United, and some other LGBTQ advocacy groups who have approached the city about adding various protections. But in December 22 of 2015, council adopted Resolution R151665, and that resolution stated that the city's current pro- And that resolution stated that the city's current prohibition of sex discrimination should be interpreted and administered to guard against the use and stereotypes that are associated with sexual orientation and gender identity. That resolution referenced a prior resolution from Oh-eight, Oh-nine-dash-twelve, which is when the city of Norman joined the National League of Cities Partnership for working towards inclusive communities. The resolution also referenced the U.S. Supreme Court's same-sex marriage ruling, Obergefell versus Hodges, which came out in two thousand fifteen, and effectively legalized same-sex marriage, recognizing it as a fundamental right and making it applicable throughout the country. The application of that resolution, so basically how it would be interpreted as the ordinance currently stands, is that the sex discrimination would be applicable in Chapter Seven, as well as it also applied to all city personnel policies for our internal employment issues. It addressed all three areas that are addressed by the ordinance. The interpretation given to employment, it was acknowledged that that was consistent with what the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or the EOC, which is who regulates federal anti-discrimination. That particular interpretation was consistent with the EOC's consistent interpretation of sex discrimination under Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. The resolution also acknowledged that HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is the federal agency that regulates housing, interprets the Fair Housing Act to also include those kind of protections. And it was also interpreted to be applicable to public accommodations. So, kind of the next step in the process was to look at adding these protections. There has been a request for several years to add these specific LGBTQ protections as specifically enumerated protected classes in the language of the ordinance itself. So, that request was submitted to the Human Rights Commission. As I mentioned, Mr. Holliday and I basically went through our current ordinance and looked at other anti-discrimination regulation throughout the country and looked at ways that we could update our ordinance and ways at adding those protections. So, the Human Rights Commission first reviewed a draft on January twenty-eighth of two thousand nineteen. At that meeting, there were three areas that the Human Rights Commission asked us to further modify. They requested that we add electronic communication to the prohibition against discriminatory publication, just recognizing, bringing that into more modern times, to add the electronic communication, like social media and email. The current ordinance has a requirement that in order for the employment sections to be applicable, the employer has to have a minimum of five employees. And the Human Rights Commission asked us to remove that minimum number amount. Part of the thought process there was the advocates that had brought this to our attention expressed a concern that there are individuals working in Norman who could potentially kind of have a gap and not be protected under other state laws or federal laws, because most federal laws do have a minimum employee requirement of fifteen or twenty employees before the EOC would ever look at those complaints. And then, the third thing is that there was an exception in the definition of employer, excluding domestic service from the employment provisions. And the Human Rights Commission requested that we look at adding some definitions to clarify what is meant by domestic service. So, those three additions were drafted and presented to the Human Rights Commission on April twenty-second. The Human Rights Commission did approve those unanimously and provide the recommendations that we submitted to city council for review and approval. The ordinance was then presented to the Oversight Committee for review and discussion on May ninth of this year. And as you all know, you all looked at it as a full body at study session on July sixteenth of two thousand nineteen. And at that study session, really the only substantive modification was staff was directed to remove the domestic service exception from the definition of employer, which we did. So, to kind of go through each of the amendments individually, the first thing, of course, as was the initial request, was to add LGBTQ protections. The ordinance amendments create three new specifically enumerated protected classes for sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and the third one being marital status, including marriage to a person of the same sex. These three protections are added throughout the ordinance, but particularly in the Declaration of Policy and Objectives in Section Seven, one oh-one, and in the general prohibition of discrimination and retaliation in Section Seven-dash-one oh-four. Of course, with new protected classes, we needed to add new definitions. So, the definition for gender identity or expression is the actual or perceived gender-related identity, appearance, expression, mannerisms, or other gender-related characteristics of an individual, regardless of the individual's designated sex at birth. We added a definition for sexual orientation that reads an individual's actual or perceived heterosexuality, homosexuality, asexuality, or bisexuality. The other thing that the ordinance amendments do is it really clarifies the role of the Human Rights Commission. As I mentioned earlier, this ordinance has been in place for over twenty to thirty years. But we really just want to kind of clarify exactly how the Human Rights Commission role works. As you all know, the Human Rights Commission is an advisory board that answers to this body. It consists of nine members. By ordinance, five members' vote is required for a quorum and to take any action. The Human Rights Commission consists of citizen volunteers that are appointed by the mayor and approved by city council. One of the things we clarified about their role was we did add a duty. There's a section in here that talks about what the duties of the Human Rights Commission is. And we added one that states to provide and promote education and awareness of the rights provided in this code. One of the priorities that was discussed was making sure that individuals and citizens are aware of their rights, that there's that public knowledge. So, we added that as one of the listed duties. And we also added a reporting duty, which would require the Human Rights Commission to submit to you all an annual report of how many complaints were filed and what the resolution of those complaints. But it does provide that if no complaints are filed in any given year, then a report is not required. And that's consistent with like what the Norman Election Commission does with you all when they submit an annual report of their activity. The other thing that the ordinance amendments do is streamline the complaint and complaint resolution process. If you recall in your materials at study session, we provided a clean copy of the proposed ordinance, annotated copy, and also a copy of the ordinance as it is now. And you'll see that with these amendments, it significantly shortens just the language of the ordinance. The purpose of that was to make it more clear, easier to read, again, so that the public would have a clear and easy understanding of what their rights are and what the process is. The amendments changed kind of the formal complaint process to call it an administrative review process, just recognizing kind of the purpose of the Human Rights Commission and the purpose of what getting complaints and trying to resolve those complaints really is. The goal, of course, is to find an amicable resolution that offers real remedies to aggrieved individuals. You'll see throughout the ordinance that there was really an emphasis on focusing on mediation and other alternative dispute resolution options, just to make sure that the parties do have those available to them throughout various stages of the process. And it is noted in there, of course, that nothing about this administrative review process would preclude any individual from concurrently filing or pursuing other administrative remedies and/or a private civil action. So, even if a complaint were to be submitted to the Human Rights Commission, there would be nothing precluding them from going to the EOC or to HUD or filing a private lawsuit if their complaint met those other requirements. The complaint filing administrative review process, again, it doesn't really change it a lot substantively, other than just kind of streamlining it and clarifying how that works. Complaints are to be filed with the city clerk, the city clerk's office, on a form adopted by the Human Rights Commission, which was submitted in your materials. One of the things Mr. McMahon assisted with was making sure that we added language in here that makes it really clear that, of course, accommodation would be provided for individuals with disabilities upon request if they needed assistance in filing a complaint. And it specifically references the ADA accessibility and inclusion statement that you all passed a couple months ago, which does refer individuals to Mr. McMahon if they need to request an accommodation for the complaint process. All complaints must be filed within ninety days after the alleged act of discrimination or retaliation occurs. The language in the amendment states that the Human Rights Commission shall review the administrative review at the next regularly scheduled or special meeting that's at least thirty days after receipt of the complaint. The purpose of that is to kind of put that thirty-day period, just to make sure that the commission has time to explore mediation options, if that's something that parties are interested in. And also, just to make sure that the respondent, the person who's being accused of a complaint, has an opportunity to receive notice of the complaint and to respond. And as I mentioned, explore mediation or other settlement options before the review in case there's an opportunity for those to be successful. There's already language in the ordinance that addresses this part, but still, as always, the complainant and the respondent would always have rights to file written responses, appear at the administrative review proceeding, be represented by their own legal counsel, bring additional witnesses, or present additional information, just making sure everyone's due process rights are protected. Resolution of complaints, again, there's a heavy focus on mediation, ADR options. The language of the amendments makes it clear that mediation can be explored as a possible option prior to the administrative review hearing happening. Also, it's always an option available through the administrative review process. Other possible resolution of complaints is the Human Rights Commission does have an option to dismiss a complaint if by majority vote, the commission finds that the complaint is unfounded, or that no additional action is warranted, or that the issue has been resolved through some other means. And then, finally, if mediation is unsuccessful, or they choose not to participate in that, or if dismissal is not appropriate, the commission does have the opportunity to provide a written recommendation to the city attorney as to the merits of the complaint and whether they believe further action is warranted. The next step of the process would be that the referral of that complaint would go to the city attorney, and the ordinance lists several enforcement options that our office would have. As always, we want to preserve the right to be able to refer the complainant to other local, state, or federal entities. As I mentioned, the EOC regulates federal complaints that meet certain requirements. HUD addresses complaints in the area of housing. The Oklahoma Attorney General's Office also has a Office of Civil Rights Enforcement. So, we're just recognizing that if appropriate, we can always refer the complainant to pursue those other remedies as well. Again, mediation is mentioned at that point. There is also the prosecution or the possibility of prosecuting the respondent municipal court to enforce the city ordinance there. The penalty range there is what it is for most of our non-traffic offenses, which is a fifty-dollar to seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine and/or up to sixty days in jail. It also gives us the option of filing injunctive relief in district court if appropriate. Or again, it provides another level of review for us to look at if we determine that there's no further action should be taken. As I mentioned earlier, part of the point of amending the ordinance was just to kind of simplify the substantive protections the way it is right now. There are separate sections that address employment, housing, and public accommodations with several subsections and exceptions. And what we have done is combined all three of those areas into one general prohibition against discrimination and retaliation. That is included as proposed, Section Seven, one oh-four, and then it just lists specific exceptions for each of those categories, but just tries to combine it into one general and easy-to-read provision. Other definitions that really were just kind of cleanup items, we amended the definition of age to make it consistent with the Federal Age Discrimination Employment Act, so that it reads that age discrimination is, somebody has to be forty years or older. It currently says, I think, forty to sixty, and I don't know where that came from. So, we're just making sure that that was consistent. And then, of course, modernizing the language, changing the reference to handicapped person to disability, which is consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and amending the definition of that as well. Additional proposed changes that were requested by the Human Rights Commission, as I mentioned earlier, which is adding that electronic communication piece, removing the minimum number of employees, and then, as requested at the study session, removing domestic service from the definition of employer. So, the next steps, if council is to adopt this ordinance tonight, our next steps would be to modify our anti-discrimination contract provisions. We currently have language in our contracts and bid specs that requires contractors that we do business with to ensure that there's certain anti-discrimination protections. So, we would modify the language of those contracts to make sure that these additional LGBTQ protected classes are included. And then, also modifying our ADA accessibility and inclusion statement to reflect that language as well. And then, another thing that council had mentioned and oversight had mentioned was wanting us to conduct training for the Human Rights Commission and also for local businesses, just to educate the Human Rights Commission on how to review complaints and to educate our local business community on the requirements of these provisions and how to make sure they're in compliance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Scott.
Just a comment. I want to say I really appreciate how thoughtful the Human Rights Commission and you were with everything that is before us tonight. So, I really appreciate it and the time spent by you and every member of that committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
I have a couple of comments. The first is to compliment you, Christina, and the legal staff and the Human Rights Commission on this beautiful piece of work. I actually read it. I read the annotated version, so I'd know what the changes were. And that was a struggle, but I think I learned a lot, and I was very pleased with what I saw. What I'm not pleased about, and you know this, is the deletion of the domestic service exception. And I feel that my reaction at the study session was that that affected privacy in the home. And I still feel that way. But I asked the legal staff to take a look and to tell me where I'm right or where I'm wrong. And I want to read a couple of sentences from the four pages that they gave me. If the proposed amended paragraph is enacted without an exception for domestic service and the ordinance is challenged, it would have to survive strict scrutiny analysis, meaning the ordinance has to be narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling government interest, that is, protecting certain classes of people from discrimination using the least restrictive means necessary. The city would have to demonstrate that the exception was narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling government interest, protecting one's right to freedom to association within one's home using the least restrictive means necessary. That means that if challenged, it may be difficult to defend the lack of this exception, the intrusion of the HRC in the privacy of the home. I think it belongs back in. And my vote for this, unfortunately, is contingent upon that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, guys, for your work. I really appreciate everything the Human Rights Commission has done, city staff, and I appreciate you all accommodating my request and others on the council to remove those exclusions based on employment within the home or less than five employees, because I believe that that leaves some of our community's most vulnerable citizens without protection, even from an oversight-type situation with the Human Rights Commission and mediation. I don't feel like that's a big intrusion. There's not going to be a door-to-door police state, which I think is probably what that law is actually trying to address. I don't think that having a Human Rights Commission that hears and helps mediate those kinds of situations for those that are most vulnerable in our community. So, I appreciate that, and I will be voting for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Anne Gallagher, twenty-five thirteen Woodsong. You did a great job, but I have to agree with Councilwoman Scanlon. As I said in the study session, my first thought was the most vulnerable were the elderly who have at-home care. And those people who have disabilities to the effect that their mental facilities are not what they used to be. And there are things said that they would never have said prior to that. I think that you're actually taking away or penalizing the elderly person with that disability, as well as their families. And I think that needs to be considered. The rest of it is fabulous. I mean, you guys did a great job. Everybody did a wonderful job. But I'm very concerned about what I consider to be one of the most vulnerable.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's Shane Dodson. I live in Ward Eight, thirty-one, twenty-nine Pine Hill. You probably know why I'm here and what I'm going to say, and that's good. I think you should know by now what I'm here and what I'm going to say. I do have a question about the public accommodations. Is that referring to public restrooms and as like in public buildings, as well as private businesses that have public restrooms? as like in public buildings, as well as private businesses that have public restrooms?
Go ahead and finish your comments, and we can have-
Did that include public restrooms? It says public accommodations. Is it in public restrooms and public, am I asking the wrong person?
Yes.
Okay. So you're for allowing men to go into women's restrooms and women to go into men's restrooms?
Um, I was just wondering about that.
Okay, well, see, what I have to say basically is, I'm a Christian, I believe God created them male and female, so I understand that it's probably not the popular opinion here tonight, but that's okay, I didn't expect it to be. But the point is, I don't appreciate what's been done here, sadly. I wish I could. I understand the issue of discrimination, I understand not discriminating on the basis of race, because obviously, God made everyone from different backgrounds, different races, I get that, gender, I get that, God made them male and female, and there is no male or female in Christ Jesus, the Bible says, so there's no barrier there, I understand that. Disabilities, I get that. Physical disabilities, I get that, mental disabilities, I understand, no discrimination. But you're inventing a category. You see, I can't discriminate against two men that are married, because there is no such thing as two men that are married. I can't discriminate against a man who says he's a woman, or who is a woman, because there is no such thing as a man who is a woman. Okay? So you can't tell people that they can't discriminate against something that doesn't even exist. Okay? And I love the fact that I hear that you can't legislate morality, when that's exactly what is happening here right now. You're legislating your own moral standard. Now, I understand that we're addressing people who are hurting, people who are in pain, I get that. This is not the answer, though, affirming them is not the answer. We have the answer, the answer is the gospel, the answer is hope through Jesus Christ, who has died on behalf of sinners. Jesus said, "Greater love has no man than this, than he who lays down his life for his friends." So I'm here, actually, people might think I'm here out of hate, but I'm actually here out of love, because that is the only kind of love, is unconditional love, and that's what can be found through Jesus Christ. I understand that this is, minds are probably made up on this, I just plead with you to not pass this ordinance. You're going to be inviting lawsuits, you're inviting trouble upon yourselves, and it's not necessary. I urge you to rule righteously, as Psalm 2 instructs you to do, to rule righteously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I figured there might be. Let's-
I want someone to-
I'll make questions.
Okay. And make sure you introduce yourself before you start your comment.
My name is Nancy Harrington, I'm for Trail Roads Court, and I would just like to thank you, the people who brought this forward so much, Don Holliday, everybody. We know that the hateful words cause harm, and people who are most vulnerable need to be protected, and we know, because we know that that harm sometimes causes people to take their lives, as my son did, so I truly appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Troy Stevenson, I work for an organization called The Trevor Project, we're the world's largest LGBTQ youth anti-suicide organization. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the council, I appreciate all the work that has been done on this, especially from Don Holliday, and I, once again, didn't intend to speak tonight, but after what I just heard, I want to make a few things clear. The city council here in Norman, the people of Norman are attempting to not only protect people from discrimination, you're trying to save lives. What this does is it affirms, it does affirm, sir, to the youth in this city that they are okay, that it's not okay to abuse them, and it's not okay to make them second-class citizens in their own homes. What it does is takes kids, we just did a national survey that says that youth that have been subjected to something called conversion therapy, or any attempt, which is what you just discussed, to change their sexual orientation or gender identity, become, 47% have attempted suicide in the last year. When you take a transgender person, that number goes up to 62% have attempted suicide in the last year because of the exact same thing that that gentleman was just discussing. I thank the council for taking up this fight, and for making sure that these young people know that they have a future, and they have a future in a city that will protect them, that will respect them, and will give them the dignity they deserve. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Erin Simpson, my pronouns are she/her/hers, I live at 2251 Brettford Way in Norman. I also have the honor and privilege of serving LGBTQ students at the University of Oklahoma as my full-time role. I am not speaking as a university employee, I want to be really clear about that. But I do want to thank you for working to create an environment in which I actually feel good about recruiting people to come live, study, work, function, exist in the city of Norman. I've lived here for 18 years, I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere else, and today I'm proud. So thank you for voting yes, I appreciate your work here.
I'm really disappointed about the discussion of Jesus and love, that's apparently trying to erase the existence of a whole bunch of my friends, said they didn't exist. I think they exist. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcy King, 612 Trishalene, here in Norman. I have a question about the, there was a slide up here a little while ago, and in the ordinance, I think it's 7103.5, they talk about independent contractors being excluded. What is the definition of an independent contractor?
Yes, the reason why independent contractors are excluded is they're not employees. So an independent contractor would be if you contracted out with, like, for example, if you were to hire, not hire, but if you were to retain like a lawn service or something like that, like as a private citizen, you know, the employer would be the person who ran and managed the lawn service, but the individuals that came out and worked on your lawn would not be your employee, because they're an independent contractor. So it's just that they're not an employee, because it's an independent contract.
Thank you. I would urge you guys to reconsider and take this back for more discussion, because I think that that opens up, I know, Mr. Scanlon, that you're opposed to being told what to do in your home, but these are human beings, and there's no place that they deserve to be discriminated against, no place. Doesn't matter if they're in your home, on your lawn, in a park, whatever, you don't have a right to treat somebody with hate. So I would ask that you guys would reconsider this, and have a little bit more discussion about that exclusion. And as a parent of a child who is part of this community, and having lived through the hate that this community offers, and he's in college in a different state because of the amount of harassment and hate that he received in Oklahoma in the school system. You guys were wondering why our kids are leaving Oklahoma, it's because we're not progressive enough, we're not sticking up for them, we're not creating a path that allows them to be who they are as they grow up. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, I am the Reverend Dr. Henry Roberson, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army, retired, 1141 Pinehurst Drive, Ward 2. And I don't mind people telling me the reasons that they have their positions. I'm sorry the lady objects to the mention of Christ, he was telling us why he feels what he feels, and thinks what he thinks, and that's okay. I'd like to share the most common verse found in the Bible. It occurs 100 times, and it goes mostly something like this. Do not oppress the stranger or the alien that is in your land, for you were once aliens in Egypt. We're all very different people. As I stand and I look up here behind the council, "In God we trust," lots of people object to that. E Pluribus Unum, I believe there's a major party that's trying to divide this country up. If you are Jehovah's Witness, I don't think you like much of any of those flags, and there are actually some people in Norman, I hear, it's a rumor, that don't like OU. So, you know, we all have different sorts of opinions, but that's what makes a horse race, and that's also how we learn from one another. That's how we learn from one another. So I think that's a good thing. In the army, for 30 years, I dealt with people who were very different from me. I dealt with people who had faith that made that guy look like a non-believer, people who had very little faith, people who had no faith at all. But I learned, and I found the beautiful in all of those. But I also, the first church I served at in Oklahoma City was Sacred Heart Church, and in 1928, there was a cross burned on our lawn because a Catholic, ah, how horrible, was running for president. That was an outrageous thing. A man who was divorced ran for president, and my mother went on the entire campaign period, she was wrong. All legal, and in a broad sense, differences are to be tolerated and sometimes learned from. I think the efforts of this council are very good, and I appreciate them very much. So thank you for your effort, and keep pitching. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name's Tammy Dodson, I live in Ward 8, and so I guess-
Is that, are we asking our questions to you about the public accommodations?
As the last lady asked, we were just wondering about that.
Yeah, ask us, and she'll be the one to answer, since she gave the presentation.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, what that meant about the public accommodations? What does that mean, like?
Do we want to read the definition? I don't have anything in front of me.
Public accommodation is defined in the ordinance as any place, business, or activity which is open to, accepts, or solicits the patronage of the general public, or offers goods, services, or recreation to the general public. In the ordinance, it talks about how discrimination against any person or persons within the city of Norman regarding employment, housing, public accommodations, and public services on the basis of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, age, place of birth, disability, sex, marital status, familial status, gender identity or expression, and sexual orientation is prohibited.
Okay, so as far as like discrimination, I think, and I'm a believer as well, you know, that discrimination doesn't want to go either way, and who was it? Mr. Scanlon, is that it? You were mentioning about the domestic worker, can y'all elaborate on that? I mean, just anyone that you would have in your home to do a service that you pay for? Like, if you come to clean my house, or whatever, is that what we're talking about?
Okay.
Pretty much?
Yes, initially, the language in the ordinance clarified that an employer would exclude employment of individuals in domestic service, such as private household workers employed in a private home, nannies, housekeepers, and elder caregivers.
I would say I think the freedom needs to go either way, so the oppression needs to stay balanced, and I think that's what you're saying, like, you know, just giving people the freedom to choose what they want to choose. And if your convictions are, you know, one way or the other, I mean, you need the freedom to choose, and so, but I would say as a believer, I'm a believer in Jesus Christ, and we continue to come on many different issues, not only this, but abortion, but the point is that we know many people that have left the LGBTQ community, and they've come out of a lot of oppression, and they have found the love of Christ. And so, that's still open and an option to anyone, you know, and I don't know if that came across to my husband or the pastor, but that's still, you know, there's a lot of people finding healing through Christ that desire it, because we meet a lot of people that don't want to stay where they're at, and they don't want to stay confused. And so, you know, they're compelled by the love of Christ, and that's why we come and let you know that that's out there, but thank you for answering our questions.
Any other public comment? Good team spirit over there. All right, see-
If you don't mind, I just have one thing to say, I can't help myself. Okay, I live at 1325 West Lindsay Street, Ward 2, and I just wanted to say that young trans men, like me, have to 57% statistical likelihood of attempting suicide in their lifetime. The language you use when describing us, talking about our struggle, is extremely important. If you legitimize what the previous speaker said by giving him credence in what he's saying, what I hear is that you don't see me where I am. I exist, and I understand that many of you think that's an unfortunate thing, but I can't do anything about it. This step has to be taken. Passage of this amendment doesn't prohibit us from having further conversations about the details or the nuance. What it does is break ground, do something that no city in Oklahoma has ever done before, and encourage surrounding cities to pick up the mantle of advancing LGBTQ equality. There is nothing about this that says this will be the end of this debate. This resolution, passing this amendment, changing the civil rights, is not the end-all-be-all. There can still be more conversations, more opportunities to make this the perfect bill, but in the meantime, passage of this bill is necessary, because while we debate the nitpicks and the small details, folks like I do not have protections against discrimination for housing, public accommodations, so while we want to argue the logistics and the details, and I understand the importance, there are people that live in the bylines of that conversation. And every day that we don't pass this legislation, every day that we continue to wait, to wait for the perfect tomorrow, to wait for the perfect opportunity, the perfect bill that solves all the problems and ties all the bows exactly like we want them, we will be waiting forever. And I feel like I've waited long enough. So if you won't take this step forward, I'm not really sure when you're going to be taking any steps with my community, and we're watching you. And we're watching what you say and do, and who you legitimize, and who you vote, and this is my life in the crossfires. And I'm so tired of watching everybody else talk about their son, their gay daughter, this is me, this is who this bill is talking about, and this is who these conversations and these amendments affect. You're looking at them, I work at Starbucks on Campus Corner, and I deserve the same rights and privileges as you and me, so it amazes me that some folks have the opportunity to change my life, and they might say no to that. So don't say no. Vote yes tonight, it's an obvious decision, and the clearly correct step, and the clearly right direction of literally changing my life, my entire life. So I really appreciate y'all coming out, and I really appreciate you guys giving everybody the opportunity to speak, but I just hated the idea of ending on somebody who wouldn't actually be affected by this bill, because the people this bill affects are the people who look like me, and even more vulnerable members of my community who are people of color, who are trans women of color, that bear the brunt of those violences every single day. Mitigate those violences, do the right thing, it is clearly the right thing to do. It is clearly the right thing to do. That's all I got to say.
I didn't see anyone else coming up for a public comment. We're going to end on that note. So are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Scott?
Tough to follow. However, I pressed my button earlier when some other people were speaking and I just wanted to like throw some statistics out there, but they're no longer here to hear them. So I just, yes, to what Matt has said and thinking about gender on a continuum rather than just being binary is really important. It's again, 2019, not like year 2000, or I'm sorry, like year zero, whatever, BCE. So we just need to be, I think we're making the right steps. Norman is inclusive. Norman is the place we want to go. We have had some tragedies in our community due to the kind of hateful language that has been said here in this very hall. So I think we need to be mindful of that when we're making these decisions. And what was the other thing I had? Oh, there was a lady who came forward earlier who had mentioned something about the exclusions. And I wanted to comment that actually we were taking the exclusion out, which is what the disagreement was about. Was it you?
The exclusion for...
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because you, so you said like we should, yeah, so we're removing the exclusion is what I understood? We're keeping the exclusion?
They're excluded because they're, they're not our employees. So we, you can't give rules for an employee who's not an employee.
The employee part covers it. Okay, so we can't discriminate in our homes is what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
What I'm trying to get across is we're not, we can't discriminate in our homes or anywhere, or we shouldn't anyway. Am I correct, Christina?
To provide some clarification, so the domestic service exception has been removed. I think her question was regarding independent contractor exception. And it's listed as an exception. Really, I don't know if the exception's the right word. It was just added in the ordinance just to clarify and make it crystal clear that an independent contractor is not an employee because it's a contractual relationship, not an employment relationship. So I don't know if the word exclusion is really the right language. It's just in here to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
That it would not be considered an employee because it's a contractor, not an employee.
Okay.
And that is still in there.
Thank you. Sorry for any confusion. So that's, those are my comments. Just want to say again, thank you for your work. Thank you to everyone who came here tonight for this. We have other business after this ordinance, or the amendment. So you do exist. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bierman?
So I too pushed my button quite a bit earlier, but I'm going to say what I'm going to say because I think all of you who actually do stick around for the entire agenda item deserve to hear it as well. Because what we are talking about here is a statement of our values as a community. I don't believe that we've gotten to the point of being a truly inclusive community yet, but things like this help get us there. Things like this and addressing these things head-on is what takes, gets us one step closer. Is this perfect? No. Or do I, do I think that independent contractors deserve these kinds of protections too? Yes. Do I think that that's something we need to work on in the future? Absolutely, yes. Because as councilmember Scott said, a person is a person regardless of whether or not they're employed by you or employed by someone else who pays their paycheck. If they are, you do, I don't believe that anyone should have a past to speak poorly of someone regardless of their employment status with you directly or with a company that you employ. So I do believe that this is something that we're going to have to address in the future. Do I still want to get these protections on the books right now? Yes. Because as we have seen, we are definitely not there yet. There are still far too many people who believe that you simply being human is not enough to treat you with kindness and respect and decency and allow you to live your life the way you want to live it and be able to go in public to places that fit who you feel that you are and not feel like you are anything less than that. So no, we're not there yet, clearly. Tonight very clearly showed us that. I'm not a fear monger. Someone wants to bring down a lawsuit because of what we do tonight? Come at us. I welcome it. Frankly, I hope they file it tomorrow. And so, is this going to be the end of what we do to keep working towards our motto, which is building an inclusive community? No. I think this is a very good step. I appreciate hearing all the perspectives here tonight because they help us, give us, they give us a guidepost of where we are and where we need to go. And while I do believe that we should be as tolerant as we can, I'm not going to be tolerant of someone who does not believe that every single person has the exact same standing, no matter who they are. So I am thrilled to be voting for this tonight and I look forward to the next time we bring you out here to do something just like this in another venue or on another topic we haven't thought about yet. Because I want to keep extending these protections to everyone and I know that we're not there yet, but we're going to get there and I want to see all of you back the next time.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I too. Pushed my button early on. Getting a little trigger happy. I would like to point out though that as I've sat up here, I've learned so much. I'm really glad I am sitting at the seat because I feel like I have a good moral compass for these types of things. One of the things that my moral compass failed me on though was when faced with a very severe negative reaction to something that was being said at the podium, I turned my back. And I would, I shouldn't do that because I am tasked with representing everybody here, everybody. So since then, I've learned to, some of y'all might not know what I'm talking about, but some of y'all do. I've learned to just listen and take the information and when the decision is made, is here in front of me to make, I push the button and I go with my moral compass. Turning my back is wrong. Turning my back on you guys is also wrong. So I was adamant about fighting for the fact that inside of my home, I too have to judge whether you're employable based on the merit of your tasks, based on the merit of your, what you produce. If I'm hiring somebody to watch my elder parent, I'm hiring a person, no matter their sexual orientation, their original gender at birth, their color, their political affiliation, I mean, anything you want to put in there, that's not what I should be hiring people based on. I'm hiring them because they can do the job. I do believe that the thing I keep hearing is my kingdom is my home, or my home is my castle, or whatever. I think that our Human Rights Commission, if they're faced with an elderly patient that said an off-color remark in delirium of some sort, can discern between that kind of conversation and not hiring somebody because they're transgender, not hiring somebody because they're gay, not hiring somebody because they're white, not hiring somebody because they're, have a different religious belief than myself. This is what we're talking about. We're talking about protecting our citizens, giving them the opportunities that the person sitting next to them has, no matter what set of circumstances you bring to the table. You should have the same opportunities. Does that make sense? I do believe the independent contractor thing is covered in employment law, so we're covered there. I had concerns about the domestic household helper, the lawnmower, the person that's going to work on my plumbing, the person that I might hire in my home if I'm not making good, sound decisions based on their abilities to do the task. I, I believe that there are less opportunities for them to get recourse in that and that if, if we as a city can stand up for them, then I think that's what we're doing with this. And hopefully all of that came across.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hickman?
I also want to thank our staff for their hard work on this ordinance. Very much thank you, Beth and others. I want to thank the Human Rights Commission, Kay, and the rest of the team for all their hard work on this. And of course, Mr. Holliday for volunteering his time as an attorney and lending his expertise to this effort. I know this is something that, I remember when we were discussing the last change and we wanted, I believe, to go this far back then, years ago, and didn't quite get there. So as this being my last council meeting, I will say that I'm very pleased to get an opportunity to vote on this and, and it's going to be one of the highlights of my short, long, however you want to look at it, time on council is to be able to support this. I respect the opinion of everybody who has spoken. I think that's part of my job of sitting up here is to listen and to respect people's opinions. But I, I come at this from really a two-pronged perspective. One, as a professional, as a lawyer, I have represented children in our schools, one of the individuals mentioned in schools, individuals, you know, that were gay, sons and daughters of parents that were bullied and that, some of them to the point where they were on suicide watch. And it's unfortunate, but it happens. And while this, tonight's not doing anything about it, at least hopefully begins to send a message, address the culture, and brings awareness to a need that we have in our society right now. But I also come at it from a personal standpoint. I have a very close family member who is gay. And yes, he's a person. Yes, he deserves rights and to be respected. And I think from that, those two angles, both professionally and personally, this is something that I feel very strongly about and something that I'm very proud and pleased that we are getting to address tonight. And I'm going to stop talking because I don't want to get emotional, all things considered. So I do thank everybody again, and I'm really honored that we're going to get to vote on this tonight and I'm looking forward to it going into effect in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
I knew when I spoke earlier that I'd be labeled, be it homophobic or racist or whatever, and believe me, that's not in my heart. It is not. It, it occurs to me that the original proposal from the Human Rights Commission was not to eliminate this exception, but to further define it. And that was done. And I thought for the better. It really, the stories I've heard tonight really, really do affect me and I really do care. But as I said before, I really care about the privacy issue as well. And I'd not be true to myself if I accepted this, this potential intrusion. I can't say it would be an intrusion. It all remains to be seen and I understand that. But it's just, it's a matter of principle. And I apologize for that, but it is. And I would offer an amendment to put that back in, but I know full well that we'd be wasting our time even voting and discussing it. So I'll just make my point again. Privacy is a big deal for me. I like everything I've seen, everything in, in, in the ordinance and I appreciate all of the hard work. But I am where I am.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Petrow?
So I too want to thank the Human Rights Commission and Professor Holliday, he was my professor anyway, for all of its hard work and staff's hard work. And you know, this is, gosh, it's just overwhelming. This is why you join council right here. Ooh. I mean, I get to punch my button, yes. I get to do that. How amazing is that? But I guess, you know, we heard a lot, and I too punched my button to speak a little while ago when I was squirming in my seat. You know, to me, this is just about loving and protecting one another and living in a community that's welcoming. And I don't want to cry either, so I'm trying really hard not to. But I want to tell you all, where I live in Ward Three, there's a city park right behind my house and there's a bench there that is a remembrance bench of an, a young man who committed suicide after a city council meeting, I believe, five years ago?
Nine.
Nine? There was a lot of hate speech at that meeting and, or at least, you know, in my interpretation it is. And I guess we've come a long way. We haven't come far enough, but we've come a long way. And I feel like hopefully he's looking down on us and says, you guys are coming, you're doing the right thing. I mean, I know we are, but I hope that he's smiling from, from above. If we left a loophole in this thing that allows for some bigotry, well, let's fix it later on, okay? I'm going to pass this today for exactly your comments. We need to protect people. And Professor Holliday, if we left a loophole, bring it to us. Let's fix it, okay? We can always pass an amendment and, and get that fixed. I feel obviously the Human Rights Commission is more than capable of fixing that. And you know, you should be able to, anybody should be able to seek redress with their city. And they should feel like that you don't just exist, you're loved, you're worthy, this is your city. We're happy to have every single person here and you need to feel welcome in your own city and protected. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I would echo some of the comments, just thanking everybody that worked on this, everybody that's here tonight, everybody watching at home. So I'm from Norman. Many of you know that I'm a fourth generation Norman native resident. I've been on this council longer than anybody else as well. And growing up in Norman, at least from my perspective, I was raised by a single dad and I'm an only child. I grew up close to campus. I grew up on the east side and I guess, growing up, I wouldn't have thought that this would have been needed in Norman. Based on my own experiences, I, where I was at, I always thought, well, Norman's a very accepting and pretty progressive place. I really like it. And maybe that's because I grew up next to the campus, I'm not sure. But I, growing up, I would have not thought some of these issues were a problem in Norman. And I didn't know that until that council meeting that happened in October 2010. And I sat right there in that front row and watched what unfolded. And there were definitely things said that I had never heard before in Norman before. I was shocked. I was just like, I didn't know folks that thought that way lived here and were so angry about what was going on. I'd never seen that before. And so nine years ago, I wouldn't have thought this was needed, but today I definitely do. And I will be voting to support this tonight. So thank you all.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Well, yeah, I certainly want to thank the staff and the Civil Rights Commission for all their hard work and your work especially in leading Oklahoma. And I'm proud of the fact that Norman leads the state of Oklahoma on so many different levels and this is certainly one of them. And as I pondered this ordinance and read it and thought about it and had a lot of discussions about it, you know, one thing that I certainly don't do, and especially when it is a reflection of what our values are, and that's what this ordinance is, is be, make decisions because of fear. And I'm certainly never been influenced by threats or, or things like that. So I like, I, I loved it when Councilmember Bierman said, if they want to sue us, bring it on because we are ready. So, and we are not afraid. So again, as I thought about this, it was like this simple question about, you know, if something's illegal, it's illegal everywhere. And discrimination is illegal and assaulting your spouse, whether it's in the public or in private, is illegal. Or selling drugs in public or private and it's illegal. So discrimination should be illegal everywhere as well. And I don't believe the home is a special place where it is okay to discriminate. And I think that I'm very supportive of removing, removing these exceptions. Thank the staff for doing that and I wholeheartedly am in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will extend my thanks as well. We have an amazing staff. Christina Bell, you've really done an amazing job with this. Same thing, Mr. Holliday, you guys are amazing. But I'd also like to recognize Norman United, Norman Pride, Norman P-Flag, Freedom Oklahoma, and the Trevor Project, because we don't make change alone. We certainly don't do it by ourselves up here from the dais. We could try, but it takes you out there to enact our efforts and to make the real change happen and to guide us on the change that needs to happen. So thank you for all of your work and contributions for the historic ordinance we are about to pass. If you did not know, we are about to make history in the state of Oklahoma for being the most inclusive community in the state of Oklahoma. Tonight, we are living our motto of building an inclusive community, but more so, we are creating a model for other cities. We are providing you an ordinance and an example of what you can do and what you should do. So with that, Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of eight to one. Voting against, Councilmember Scanlon.
But I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion adopted.
Is there a second? Second. Motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of eight to one. Voting against, Councilmember Scanlon.
I'm Jeannie Snyder, Assistant City Attorney, and Bryce just walked up and said, "Oh, I'm sorry, your thing is all messed up. I'll go see if I can fix it." I'm like, "Okay." So, I don't know what that means. Let me see. It means it's all messed up. So...
Oh.
It was only a very few slides, so that's the only one I really care about. So, I'm going to go ahead and go forward. I don't, I don't need the PowerPoint for it. Tonight is about accessible parking, otherwise known as handicap parking. We've just changed the language a little bit. We met with Oversight in June of 2019, this summer, and discussed it, and then in July we went with the council conference, and then it was asked to be forwarded to city council. We are making some, a few minor changes. One in section 14, we're replacing the term handicap with accessible, and also in that same section that outlines some fine amounts for municipal court, and we're amending it from $100 fine to a $500 fine. Also, in two other parts, 27099 and 28078, we are replacing the term handicap with the term accessible. We're going to delete the former section about handicap parking in section 2817, and in 28071, there was one place, I did a quick search this afternoon, where the name, the bar still remained, and that was in that section, and we'll be replacing that with Dean's Row. Just happened to be at Oversight when we originally made some of the prior changes. Also, in section 20, in a number of sections, we're going to include pay stations along with parking meters. It's kind of another update to the code. Since we don't just have parking meters, we have those pay stations now in our parking lots, and so we wanted to include that. One item that we have talked about for a long time, not with council, but just with enforcement, is when somebody, a motorist, has a placard to park free of charge in a metered space, although they have to allow for the applicable time limits, that's always been a policy within parking been a policy within parking enforcement and the police department, and we've just decided now to go ahead and put that in the ordinance. So if you do have a handicap placard in your vehicle or a plate, you can park in metered spots if there's not an accessible handicap spot, but you don't have to pay the meter. But they would need to follow the time limits. If it's a two-hour limit, then they still have to, would have to adhere to those two-hour time limits. And that's something we've had in policy, we just wanted to get that clarified. Section twenty-eight seventeen, and section twenty is our traffic, all of our traffic regulations in our code, and we're replacing it. I went through the state statute and just combined it down, but it doesn't mirror, but is very, very similar to the state statute. And it's going to be unlawful to park, place, a vehicle in a space designated or posted as reserved for parking a vehicle or transporting a physically disabled person unless they've had and applied for a placard or a license plate. It is going to be unlawful for anybody, whether you have a placard or a plate, to park in an accessible space, aisle, wheelchair ramp, or wheelchair unloading or unloading zone. And that's for anybody, you can't park in a spot that would prohibit somebody that's driving an accessible van that they can't open their doors or who have access, and those spaces are all marked. It will be unlawful for anybody to knowingly allow a person to use a placard, not license to them, so you can't take, I couldn't take my grandmother's placard and go to Target, even though she may be well-intentioned to say, "Go ahead and use it," or I'm even in her vehicle, you would not be able to do that, you can't use somebody else's placard. But it does exclude somebody, if I was transporting somebody, I could use that placard, if I was the driver of a physically disabled person. The issue that really started this discussion was the amount of the fine. It's been $100 since 2004, unless it was paid late or five days after the issuance, and then it increased to $150. The state statute has the fine set of $500, not up to $500, but $500, and with this ordinance change, we're asking this council to approve that. There is some language about if it's your first offense, it can be dismissed, and our court, within thirty days, and our court is very, very aware of when somebody comes with a handicap citation, if it's somebody whose placard had expired, as long as they go ahead and renew their placard, they can bring that to the court, and we would also dismiss that also, because those things do happen. And the one slide that I was happy to have remaining up here is, our streets department will re-sign, and I think they told me there's a hundred and sixteen, there may be more or less, a hundred or so signs, because we thought it was important to put on the signs when somebody would park in a space that was for a physically disabled person, if you pull up and you see that sign and it says a $500 fine, it really might make you think twice to back out and go find somewhere where you can legally park. And I think that's it, it's pretty straightforward, just making it a little more clear. I did speak to one of our parking service officers who has been with us a long time about impounding vehicles, I thought you might have a few questions about that. They're also very careful and cautious about that. There are two ways they can confirm, if somebody has a placard, and if it's current, they can, during the day, eight to five, call the state office and find out, and there's also, now through Olets, our dispatching system, twenty-four-seven, you can call and confirm. So if some folks do, if it's, they may have put the wrong one, or didn't get their new one put up, and it still says expired, we really, John Hensley tells me that they make sure and try to check to confirm that that, somebody has a current one before they would impound a vehicle. They also, he tells me, he tries to educate folks, they think they need to, you know, move the placard from vehicle to vehicle, and they can get multiple placards without any additional cost, and he says he spends some time, when he comes across a situation like that, tries to educate the people driving, he said he will always impound, if it's a fraudulent or counterfeit, and I may have left that out when I spoke earlier, it is, will be unlawful to alter or make counterfeit placard. I'm not quite sure how they do that, but apparently it's done, and he says they've run across that before, and that is one instance that that vehicle will be impounded. And if the space is parked, signed properly with this type of signage, he says that, you know, that's something that he takes into account, if it's only on the street, it does require to have a signage also. And the manager or owner or private property person can ask that vehicle be impounded also. So I wanted, I think we had some questions like that during one of our presentations about when we do and when we do not impound, and our officers take quite a bit of care to make sure they're not impounding somebody that doesn't need to be, because it could be costly. So do you guys have any other questions?
I have a quick one. I mean, obviously, it says on the sign, $500, what are we doing to communicate to the University of Oklahoma that we're making this change? I just think we need to make sure we're...
We did, excuse me, mayor, we did talk about that, and I'll need to get with Annalise, where we can do some press release, we will talk to OU, we've got the thirty days before it would come into effect, and we talked at the last, in July, to get out some press releases, and I'll get with Annalise and the police department and see what's the best way to talk to OU about that.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item, are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second?
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading, council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
All right, final item of the night. Item forty-six, amending chapter thirteen, licensing and occupations, in chapter twenty-two, the zoning ordinance to update licensing for medical marijuana establishments is allowed by state law, to add and update, so the zoning ordinance to allow for the location of medical marijuana establishments and uses in conformance with state law, and to add definitions in declaring an emergency. I'd like to recognize Beth Muculla, Assistant City Attorney, for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, let me see if mine is just as interesting, yeah, it is. Well, okay then. I am here to do the final presentation on ordinance oh nineteen twenty-four, medical marijuana updates based on state law. Just to retract a little bit here, we were at Planning Commission, and this ordinance was approved July eleventh. This ordinance came before city council August thirteenth, and at that meeting, two amendments were passed, first, an amendment that made testing laboratories permitted uses within oh nineteen twenty-four, in the M-one, I-one, and C-O zoning districts, and then a second amendment passed that lowered all fees set at twelve fifty to eight fifty. And so, following that last amendment, the motion to adopt the ordinance was postponed until this meeting, and city council had a conference on August twentieth to further discuss the changes in the ordinance. First, city council discussed a desire to examine zoning and licensing treatment for processors, this was discussed quite a bit at the meeting, and it was discussed how this needed to go back to the beginning of the process, is to be fully vetted, and staff was instructed to do so, and to bring forward recommendations at a future council conference, which we are already working on. And secondly, the council reviewed statewide information regarding municipal licensing of medical marijuana establishments. And finally, the council discussed a tiered structure, and specifically approval of considering tiered structure and how that would look. And so, from that meeting, council gave certain comments and instructions, first of which, council was in favor of dispensaries having a lower fee in the case that staff materials indicated that they could use less of staff time. A fee of $600 was suggested, along with a reduction at the renewal stage of as much as twenty-five percent. It was also observed that processors and grower applications seem to be using staff time more, and so council asked that staff look at those hours closer, and see if distinctions could be drawn to integrate into a tiered structure. And council also recognized that medical marijuana establishments with similar processes should be treated similarly within that tiered structure. And so, based on city council comments and the information at the conference, staff came back with a tiered structure for city council consideration, and unfortunately, I can't lay it out well, so I'll slow down so that everyone can hear. First, for a dispensary, a recommended annual fee of $600 initial and $450 renewal. Storage facilities would be the same, six hundred initial, four hundred and fifty dollar renewal. Growers and processors, city staff's recommendation was that, in their materials, they could not discern a large enough difference to recommend different fees, so a rate of nine hundred for both initial and renewal was recommended for grower and processor, and because testing laboratory functions so closely mirrored those, nine hundred was suggested for a testing laboratory as well. Finally, research and education facilities have a $500 fee at the state level, they do involve processing and growing facilities, so staff has recommended that the same amount, the $500, be recommended for initial and renewal for those facilities. So, just to update on the status of where we were at the end of last meeting, there was, at the time of postponement, there was a motion on the floor to change all of the license fees to $100 for initial and renewal. And if council wished to move on and consider a motion adopting staff's recommendations on this tiered structure, action would need to be taken on the pending motion, for example, a vote down would probably be a clean way to move straight to staff's recommendation and a motion on that. We do, I think that's the one thing I can show you, there you go, that's the one thing I needed, that would be the language for an amendment to adopt a staff-tiered structure. And following all finalizations of amendments, I just want to remind you that there is an emergency clause at the end of this ordinance, because the state law goes into effect August twenty-ninth, two days from now, we have an emergency clause that, upon separate vote, would allow our ordinance to become effective on the same day, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before we dive into questions, would council like to dispose of the current motion on the floor and entertain a new amendment at this time? If so, we can proceed to a vote now of the hundred-dollar one, so everyone would need to vote no, so we can clear that and that, because that was how we ended last meeting, all right? So, the motion on the floor, as from two weeks ago, was to change all of the fees back to $100, council members, you may now cast your votes.
I'll vote, the motion to amend the license fees to 100 per license fails unanimously.
I will entertain another amendment that was up there, hopefully it will come back. Okay, council member Scott?
I move that section one of oh dash one nine two zero dash four, at city code section thirteen dash one zero eight, parentheses, close parenthesis, be amended to set forth license fees as follows, $600 initial and $450 renewal for dispensaries and storage facilities, 900 initial and renewal for growers, processors, and testing laboratories, and 500 initial and renewal for education and research facilities. And, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from council regarding this amendment? Council member Petron.
Did we ever hear back from OMMA, about pre-rolls, processors versus dispensary?
No, I've not heard an answer to that, you will definitely have the answer by the time we present on the distinction of processing and the tiered structure within our zoning ordinance later on.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, like, I'm going to likely support this, but I don't want our people being charged twice, for just because they serve one, or sell one particular item to make them a processor, so that's my biggest thing.
Well...
If we can figure that out later.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying.
Thank you, council member. Council member Scott?
Broken, and that's been, I think, the big question, is the zoning piece that we're voting on as well tonight. I do think, however, council member Holman explained it pretty well for us last week, kind of what we understand. Okay, yeah, and so we're going to end up revisiting this anyway, just to be sure that we're not penalizing our existing dispensaries by requiring that they receive another, or that they apply for another license permit, special use, thank you, I was going to say, I don't want to be wrong. So, okay, thank you, and thank you, Beth, for your patience in bringing this back to us, you and Jane's work on it, we really appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Petron?
I also forgot to say that I appreciate you putting in the twenty-five percent reduction on renewal, thank you for that.
All right, any other questions from council? It's like a dance over there. Council member Holman?
I was just going to mention, related to this, that we are going to be taken up in committee, I think CPT, continuing to work on this zoning issue, so conversation on that is just getting started again, so I think the last Thursday of this month.
Thank you for your clarification, council member Holman.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the amendment, are there any public, yes, sir, your hand was up, you can come up first.
Hi, Jeff French, Ward Two, fifteen twenty-nine Hollywood, I do have a few comments regarding this licensure. First, I'd like to say that I think that it was great what the council did when we met two weeks ago, and in postponing to try to get more information and have a study session about it, to make a better decision. I will say on that note that I was very disappointed, because in the city council in sixty seconds video that was put out the day after, it was said, and I quote, "We will continue this discussion in next week's study session, and I encourage you to attend if you have continued input, which will help us make this the best decision for Norman." Many of us did have continued input, we came and were not allowed to give any input, so now we have to come here, and rather than having fully prepared amendments with this information, now we have to go through this whole process again. So that was a little bit disappointing. Onto the licensing issue, I've got two pieces of paper here. The first one is the OMMA's certificate of compliance, that they require applicants to file, it would appear that it is required at initial application and at renewal, and it requires five distinctly defined signatures from the municipality, since this certificate of compliance was the big push for why we needed to charge so much, because of all the staff time involved, I thought we should take a closer look at it. It requires a signature from, or requires signatures, this would come from the planning department stating that we are in compliance with a political subdivisions, applicable zoning and classifications in ordinances, it requires a signature that you are in compliance with the safety codes of the municipality, in compliance with the fire codes of the municipality, in compliance with all electrical, plumbing, waste, including environmental waste codes, and all applicable building or construction codes. So those are the things that are going to be required for city staff to sign off on in order for any medical marijuana business in Norman to apply or renew their license at the state level. The other document I have here is going to be familiar to many business owners in Norman, it is from the city clerk's office, and it is what's required to get a food service license. So pretty much any business in Norman that's going to sell any kind of food has to go through and fill out this packet, and those uses that are defined here are things like bakeries, caterers, convenience stores, fruit and vegetables, meat market, restaurant, bar club tavern, candy and gifts, delicatessen, grocery, mobile food, or snack bar. So any businesses that are doing any, that are selling food in any of those manners have to go through this process. This document requires, one, two, three, four, five distinct signatures, including from the planning department to confirm that you're in code compliance, the building inspection department to confirm that you are in compliance with all electrical... department to confirm that you are in compliance with all electrical, plumbing, building, and construction codes, the fire department to confirm that you are in compliance with all fire codes and safety codes, the environmental services department to confirm that you are in compliance with environmental waste codes, and then additionally, the county health department. You may notice a tremendous amount of overlap between those two documents because they have roughly the same requirements. Only two of these things really require onsite inspections, that's the building code inspections for plumbing, electrical, and all other construction, and the fire and safety code inspections. The city of Norman has placed on the food service license a $50 per year fee, and then has a schedule of fees for each onsite inspection. Building inspection, building code compliance inspection costs $20, and fire department inspection costs $20. And any re-inspections, if they have to come back out, are $15 each. So, any business who's gonna get a food service license is going to pay about $90 in their first year, and then $50 year after year because the onsite inspections aren't required year over year. If the city of Norman can perform all of those inspections for all of these types of businesses, everything from a mom-and-pop convenience store to a super-target grocery store for a grand total of $90, then it seems like our initial licensing of $100 for marijuana businesses was right on point. If the $20 fee for an inspection or a $15 reinspection doesn't cover the city's actual costs for performing those inspections, we need to be addressing that for all business types. Because it is not incumbent on the cannabis industry to subsidize inspections for other business types. Finally, the other thing that's been discussed a lot at the last meeting in a study session was what are other communities around us doing in the licensing space? And to that, I would really have two comments. The first is basically the same question my parents would have asked me as a child. If everybody else was jumping off a cliff, are you gonna jump off the cliff? But on a more serious note, Norman is not a community of followers. We are a community of leaders and innovators. We blaze the trail for how things should be done, as we said to president earlier by passing our Human Rights Commission updates. We have an opportunity to let the cannabis industry and all the surrounding communities know that Norman is, in fact, business-friendly because we take a common sense approach to business licensing, okay? By not throwing a sin tax at a cannabis industry, and instead, looking at the actual pragmatic implementation and acting accordingly. It is not a good idea to charge these giant fees for cannabis businesses when the city already has processes that are very similar that cost far less for other business types. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciated the handouts you provided to us at the study session and all of your emails, so we got your input.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. From the hand...
From the handout. I can yell.
We can hear you, but we can't hear you on TV. We're having technical difficulties tonight.
I needed to bring the floor up. Sign it all for me.
That would've been awesome. Just hand him my mic.
Only your microphone?
I know. We're gonna get the handheld mic.
Hello, I?
Did you press the button, sir?
I just moved something on it, I must've. All right, it was my bad. So, first, let me apologize for creating the technical delay. When we discussed this last week, there was a handout that showed Norman's, the time we spent on marijuana licensure. And I took the liberty of sort of running some of those numbers and using the total cost number from the week before when it was discussed. And it looks like Councilmember Scott got the ratios exactly right. It was 2 to 3 to 4 was the right ratio for those fees. But it also looked like the fees that fully covered the cost would have been about double what you guys are considering tonight. So, if those costs were to be taken seriously, it looks as though we're giving a 50% subsidy. Now, it strikes me as entirely plausible that the city is subsidizing other businesses even more than that. But I do think that when it comes to sort of blazing the trail, I think Norman could do very well by blazing the trail for fiscal responsibility and actually charging the costs for particular identifiable business costs that we provide services for. So, you know, our general tax dollars are meant to provide public goods. These sorts of business licensure agreements are actually identifiable benefits to particular businesses, so they should probably pay the full freight on that. I think that that's true regardless of whether or not we're talking about the marijuana industry, or whether or not we're talking about the food service industry. I think there are consistency arguments to be made, but there's also the principled argument that if you're receiving an identifiable benefit to yourself, you should be paying full freight for that. So, I would suggest that you actually raise the fees on everybody, knowing that that's probably not gonna happen tonight. I do suggest that Councilmember Holman's committee take up the actual cost structure for not just marijuana industry, but perhaps for other industries as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. John Frazier, 6055 108th Avenue, Northeast, Norman, Oklahoma, Ward 5. I've come up here tonight, woohoo, right on. We've had a lot of talk tonight about discrimination. I hate discrimination. And then we start talking about raising the prices on license fees for just marijuana, cannabis industries. I do not like that because that is right out discrimination right there. Now, I'm sure any fee that's raised on any of these growers, processors, or business industries, I'm sure they're gonna just absorb that fee because that's the kind of business they got. Such nice people, they got so much money in the cannabis industry, they can just absorb any of these other fees. Well, that's not gonna happen, it's gonna be passed on to cannabis patients just like me. And that's why, when we wrote 788, rather than lawyers, we wrote in section 788 that right above the question, where the statement where everybody's so worried about distances from the door of a school to door of a dispensary, well, the section right above that, it says that an orbit at fees cannot be raised on the cannabis industry. Raising from $100 to $1,250, $850, that's an inordinate fee, in my opinion. So, I agree with you right there. We should go back and let's look at all the businesses in Norman and raise the fees on all the businesses. I'm good with that. That's me, thank you.
James Cook, 1819 Creighton Court, Ward 6. I represent a group of veterans that have a grow operation here in Norman. We spoke last time we had this, and we were at the study council, the study session last time. I was out of town on some military duty during the study session, so I couldn't be here for that. But I did get notes from it, and I did see the hour breakdown on the cost based on the hours of usage to the city. I understand the ability and how necessary it is to quantify the time spent on anything. However, I do believe that all things should be fair and equitable across the board. As a member of this legal industry, I have that business, I also have another business here in Norman. I can tell you without a doubt that my other business doesn't fall anywhere near this scrutiny, under this much scrutiny, or this many hurdles, or this many stumbling blocks or anything. And it frustrates me that I have to do so much for this other one, when I see the benefit it does for PTSD, depression, and everything, and also the fact that it's legal. Having the fees be so exorbitant and high for something that's completely legal when, as was pointed out, for the food industry, food service industry, it's the same services essentially, but at a much, much lower price point. If you break down the cost of hours of that, I'm sure it is, if anything, close to or probably more than what the cannabis industry is having to go through. Additionally, these, this bureaucracy of it, this, all these steps, all these signatures that we are required to get is not by our choice. We don't want to make it this difficult. We're merely having to navigate these landmines and these issues ourself, and that is taking up the time. It's not by our choice, it's what we have to do in order to be compliant. So, and I also understand that if it does cost more, I think it should cost more across the board for all members of the business industry in Norman. Because we are members of the business industry in Norman. All the money I've spent in the facility has been spent primarily in Norman. My tax dollars have been spent primarily in Norman. So, it may not be fees directly to the city, but passively, it has benefited the city. And that's all I want, just want to be fair and equitable. I don't want to be chastised because I have a grow, so I should pay more because we have a few more questions we have to get answered by city employees that my tax dollars pay to be there. And I feel like they're paid to be there to help me as a citizen also. I just really want it to be fair and equitable across the board. And that's all I ask. When you do look at these fees, I don't think you should place the burden or the weight on any, either dispensary, processor, or grower. Nobody should bear the brunt of, for the group. Thank you very much. Sorry, I push the mic.
Hi, everyone. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield, Ward 7. Here's why I think we should just take the loss on this. Staff, it takes $1,200 to process it, or the applications. I think that we should just take the loss on that and incentivize the industry. Here's why. I think that like the organic movement, by allocating and encouraging capital to be centered in a non-pharma movement, it will encourage pharma to start using all of their chemists and knowledge and expertise to better understand how it can be used, better understand how they can work within this economic system to profit by it. And in doing so, we can bring about even, an even greater benefit to those patients who do need it. And, full disclosure, I am a cannabis patient. So, I would like to associate myself with the comments that have been said before, Mr. Frazier and the other ones, 100%, except for the equitability. I think we ought to incentivize this industry. And I think that means taking the health. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. Eddie Boast, 3000 Bradford Way, Ward 5. We're an inclusive community, and I think that that means we include business, everything. Everything needs to be equitable. We saw a need, and we're trying to fill that need. We sincerely believe that the product that we're producing helps people. Our brothers in the military that come back from PTSD, we sincerely believe that this is an aid. We know that there are many, many other people that benefit. Now, it's easy to put a fee like this on somebody and think, well, okay, they can afford it, they're gonna sell this stuff for a huge profit. Well, I'm here to tell you, it's not as profitable as you think, and it takes a long time to get a business going. And those fees, we're just, we're just your neighbors. We're five guys that all share a vision, and we want to do some good. We're all service members. In the past, we want to service in the future. We want to serve our brothers and sisters, our community. That kind of fee and that kind of inequitable process, how do you, how do you make that right? I mean, how do you tell me that I've gotta pay this when Burger King doesn't have to pay anywhere near what I'm gonna have to pay? We're fledgling industry. I know there's gonna be growing pains, and I know there's gonna be issues that we're not considering. But this is kinda cut and dried, isn't it? I mean, it's equitable. What's good for them is good for us. You know, why make us carry the burden? I thank you for your time.
My name is Skylar Collins. I find it creepy to give my address, so do I, am I required to do that?
So, you're Ward, you're Ward?
I think I'm Ward 4. Real winter over here, guys.
Hey, you're here.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Why are the fees not the same? How come dispensaries are getting a $300 less penalty, so to speak? And in my case, is a special use permit an additional cost, or is that gonna be included in whatever fee is determined tonight? And why is a renewal so expensive? I own a business here for seven years, I pay my $50 a year, nobody comes in and inspects me, no, I mean, a health department, clearly. The city never comes in, so why is it any different than me getting my permit, me just sending you the cash every year after that? You're not gonna have to do anything else other than process my check. And the sales tax that you guys will be gaining from the cannabis industry should more than make up for the exorbitant fee that you guys are trying to place on us?
I wasn't planning on talking, but after hearing Mr. French speak, I mean, I think that, I understand why you guys are having to do the emergency thing for putting, to, you know, be compliant with the state on adding the things in the zoning, but you are not required to make this decision that is a giant financial decision with what I feel like is not complete information. The numbers have kind of just been pulled out of the air, you know, the 600, you know, out of nowhere. And the numbers that were presented, you know, we don't really know how much of it was, like, them US figuring out the process, the city staff, and how much was actually going into it. So, I think, if anything, you guys should go back and make it all 100 again, including these new ones that you're adding in, and then with proper information and making it fair and equitable. And if it's true that that is the same cost for that, if you guys charge anything more than that, like, that is absolutely the last thing that is business-friendly, which most of you guys try to tout and say that you want to be. It's not fair, it's not equitable, and I think you should put it on the back burner before you make a big financial decision like this that could literally put lots of people out of business and discourage a lot of businesses from setting up shop in our town, so.
Okay, just taking notes. Seeing no other public comment, are there any final comments from council regarding this amendment? Councilmember Bierman?
I pushed mine? Oh, okay. I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention, I wasn't sure if I actually pushed mine or not. So, I'm good, I still wanna talk. So, I think, to me, that what this brings up is the really important point of we need to make sure that our costs are actually matching what we're charging. And I don't believe that that's the case. I don't believe that it only costs us $50 to inspect or license anything in this city. So, I do think that that is something that we need to address. I think that especially with dealing with this issue, we've come up with a pretty decent framework, probably could still use some adjusting, of how we calculate that, but I do think we need to do it. I don't think that any business should be getting any kind of a subsidy, no matter what type of business you are, whether you're in food service because you have a little coffee cart in Seitel, or, sorry, I don't, sorry, Seitel, I don't know why that name came out there, but, or if you own, if you own a McDonald's franchise, you should be, you should be paying the same based on what it costs the city to license your business. And so, I don't think that that means fees need to be reduced. I actually think that means fees on pretty much everything needs to be increased. Councilmember Petron last time brought up a really great example of a liquor store. Maybe liquor store fees don't need to be so high, and talk about a sin tax there. So, I do think that I'm going to support this tonight. However, whether it's in CPTC, or Business and Community Affairs, or whichever committee, I think this needs to be somewhat of a priority, especially since, I think you all know by now, that we have somewhat of a revenue problem here in this city. So, I want to make sure that we're covering our costs when it comes to licensing businesses. Maybe we also need to be considering what types of businesses we license. Are there some that we don't need to be licensing at all because other entities are taking care of it for us? So, I think that this brings up a really great point that we need to explore further, but I do think that I'm going to support this tonight because... because it is very clear to me that at least right now, we are not covering our costs. What that means for the future, we have some great staffers and some great committee chairs who will help us figure that out. But for now, I'm gonna be good with this for now. But, I think we're gonna be having more conversations in the not-too-distant future. So, that's where I'm sitting on it. I appreciate all the feedback, uh, because a lot of this, a lot of these nuances are not things that I would've considered at the time. Um, so, I really appreciate everyone coming out and sharing their feedback and all the emails that I've gotten. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Thank you. So, I just want to offer a friendly reminder. We're actually in the middle, we're, uh, we're working on an amendment. This amendment actually lowers the, um, cost that we agreed upon last time, which is the 850. That, just like a friendly reminder to everyone, because it's been a couple of weeks, we've all slept, it's been a long night. Um, so, this act, this amendment that we're about to vote on actually lowers the cost on dispensaries and renewals, um, because as it stands right now, in this amendment, or in this ordinance, it's at 850. Just a friendly reminder about that. Um, so, I appreciate your comments, everybody who's here from the cannabis industry. Um, John, you're like my honorary grandfather, so I'm sorry that I, like, am gonna support, um, the fees, raising the fees from 100, um, as well as the zoning. We have to do something, and our staff does commit a lot of time, and they deserve, um, to have, their work is valuable. Your work is valuable, the things that you do, providing, um, medicine to patients and giving them autonomy over what goes into their body is extremely important. We just had a historic opioid case decided upon yesterday. Um, we know that opioids are killers of, you know, our vulnerable populations, veterans, young people as well. Um, and cannabis has not ever been known to kill anybody. So, um, I could, I wanted to share some personal stories, but as a politician, I don't think I'm supposed to, um, like, put my life on blast like that. But, um, I think that it's really beneficial for, for people who are struggling, and I don't want the cost to affect our patients who are vulnerable. And I truly believe that insurance needs to be covering the cost of cannabis for patients. Like, that's a straight-up problem that we need to be, we need to be discussing that issue, um, because then it wouldn't affect patients, the people who genuinely need cannabis to get through their JH, to get through their life. Um, so, just, I won't go on my soapbox for too much longer. Just understand where we are coming from as stewards of the public budget, as stewards of our community, of our city staff, of you all, the business community. We are, we will, what you've said about equity is extremely fair, um, because we do need to be upcharging some of these businesses that do, are not paying their fair share in our city. Uh, and we will be visiting those fees through one of the committees, I believe, um, Finance Committee, which I serve on. So, you can talk to me about that if you're interested. Um, thank you for clearing that up for me, Brenda. And so, yeah, uh, this is, again, just the amendment, so you'll have time to make more comments on this, um, ordinance after we vote on the amendment to change the fee structure.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Petron?
So, you all know that this is like a very frustrating conversation for me, and it's because of the equitability argument. Um, so, for me, less than the food industry, this is more like a pharmacy, in my opinion. And we were just talking about, or Councilmember Scott was just talking about the opioid lawsuit and crisis that we just, um, heard the verdict on judgment. And to learn last time that pharmacies are at zero is, it's appalling to me to think that, you know, we're asking the cannabis industry, or any, any other business, honestly, to be subsidizing the businesses that have a free, they're freeloaded. So, here's the other side of it, though. There are costs. And I believe that if we go back to 100 and ev, and we say, okay, well, it's going to the Finance Committee, so we can look at the cannabis one at that point in time. The cannabis one can be already done, and then we owe it to those businesses to make them pay their costs. Because I can tell you that there are probably some people in this room right now who would prefer that we went back to the 100, and then they're gonna send this huge lobby and tell us about how all businesses shouldn't have to pay their fair way. And we're gonna get this big, um, argument. Whereas, if we pass it tonight, then we, it's incumbent on us to make sure that you're not being penalized. Does that make sense? To think about it this way, we would have to, um, it's, the onus is on us at that point to make sure that they are paying their fair share, like you are. So, I've gone back and forth on which way I feel about this, and honestly, I'm really frustrated about it. To be, that's just, I can't believe that we've gone $50 for some of these and none for CVS. So, just, and $1,250 for a liquor store. I mean, we are, we're just throwing a dart and deciding, what is it that they sell in there? Oh, yeah, well, let's really tax them. I mean, that, that's how it feels to me. But this one, they did provide the data. So, and obviously, I wasn't about to pass it at $1,250 last time. I wasn't gonna pass it at 850 either. Y'all heard that. To me, it's come down to something that actually, they're defending it, showing us the numbers. I don't think anybody from what I heard last time didn't, that you didn't want to escape paying what your fair share is. And so, I think they've brought that to you. I think staff has, and I fought in study session to have it reduced on renewal. And I agree with the baker over here. I think that probably processors, and I know you're more than just a baker, Skylar, um, should, their renewal fee should be less as well. So, I, we need to look at that as well. But I, I just, I appreciate staff listening and, and trying to work with us. And I feel like that I'm, this is the cost. And now it's on us, and I'm pissed off about it. I really am. So, I mean, I'm ready for the Finance Committee to look at this. This is not fair. And as a business owner, it's, it's insulting. I don't own a cannabis store, but it doesn't really matter what you're selling. So, I'll probably pass this tonight, but I hope that you all will send a ton of emails telling us how unfair it is that some businesses are freeloaded.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon?
My bottom line from the beginning is just that, a bottom line. We ought not to be making money on the backs of cannabis stores. By the same token, we're not a charity, and we ought to recover the, the costs that are involved in processing and these licenses and renewing them. Beth, I have to ask you, you make this, the comment is that th, these are staff recommendations. Is this based on actual experience, certainly in the case of the initial licensing?
Yes. So, at the August 13th City Council meeting, uh, staff did bring recommendations based on a projection.
In terms of hours?
In terms of hours, but what's important to understand is, the certificate of compliance process is brand-new. And throwing that to the front of the licensing process is also brand-new. Um, it's not only stuff that's done on the back end in addition, I mean, it's, it's an additional process, and it's moved to the front. So, the only guide po, post we had for determining what that was going to cost us was to look into the departments that will be going through that process and see, so far, in similar functions, what does it cost them? How many hours? And to compare that with, how many licenses have we had come through the city? It's not going to be an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, and so, we have to accept that. But that is the data that we brought you, and it broke down as it did. Um, there was a lot of discussion in the council conference about the fact that this is a learning process for everyone, including the industry. And we're sensitive to that as well, that the process is going to be refined and learned and smoothed. Uh, so, the staff recommendation is in response to council's, uh, comments and concerns, and it's a baseline, uh, that count, that staff felt comfortable setting with the promise of, uh, council looking at all fees in the future again.
And I have no basis to argue. I just wanted to understand. I play that, th, these figures against what Professor Ellis provided to us in terms of data that he saw. So, th, there are different ways to interpret this. But again, my bottom line is, I, I want to charge what we need to charge and not a nickel more, but not a nickel less. A, a, and I also understand, and I think we owe it to ourselves, that as we gain experience, these figures need to be revised to something that's realistic. Again, realizing for the city what the city needs, but not on the backs of, of the establishments within the city. And I also think it goes across the board. And I think, from what I hear, we're kind of in violent agreement here, that all fees need to be investigated. Equity matters.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Well, back at our, um, City Council retreat this summer, one of the number-one items that we rated as important is reviewing our fee structures here in the city of Norman. And we know that we have fees that have been in place for, you know, 20, 25 years that are certainly not appropriate for what it costs us in time and staff and energy. So, I appreciate you bringing that example up. That is one of our major priorities, and we will be looking at that and addressing that. Uh, with that being said, we passed a budget at the beginning of the year that was balanced for the first time in a long time. Um, and then a month later, we took on a massive project called Public Transportation, which immediately threw us into a million-dollar budget deficit. So, um, it becomes a question of priorities and things that are relevant and important to all of us, and what is important to us as a community and how we weigh it as councilmen. Uh, when we passed that balanced budget, there were things that I was trying, or hoping that were gonna be included in it. Uh, something like, a sidewalk down the east side of Berry Road that would allow school kids to get to the bridge over Imhoff Creek, to get to the school without having to cross Berry two times. Uh, planting trees, uh, increasing, um, fees, or increasing, um, subsidies for s, uh, low-cost bayneuter, which actually makes us money in the long run because we have less animals to handle in our shelter. So, there are, are, are checks and balances, and it's just a scale that, that tips one way or the other. And so, um, you know, if we're able to collect these cannabis fees and, and our, and our fee, our budget deficit goes from a million to, that we'd reduce it 50,000, and that's just 50,000 we've been able to reduce. And so, uh, staff has, uh, has assured me, you know, it's there, again, we understand that it's, it's, it's an estimate, but this will be covering our costs. They're, a, a, and that's their, their best es, estimate. We hope to look at it again with Councilmember Holman and the mayor's committees. Um, but I will be supporting, uh, this, uh, recommendation tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
So, yeah, we've been, I think we started in, uh, CPT, in Councilor Hickman's, uh, chairmanship. I think we started talking about this issue in April of last year, three months before the vote even happened. I think we kind of felt, this'll probably pass, and we need to be prepared. And we, even starting early, we still didn't, uh, get ahead of it. And here we are, still working on it. And then, of course, different changes in state law with the Unity Bill, and things have come about. Um, so, I think, um, I do have a lot of concerns about how the fee is, I mean, specifically after we've learned what we're supposed to do, and we've done it the first time. I do have questions about, you know, do, I have a hard time understanding how it would cost $450 to inspect a dispensary every year. I'm just, I'm not, I'm really having a hard time figuring out how it could possibly cost that much to just walk inside for five minutes and look around. Um, or in some cases, I guess we don't even inspect every year, we just ask people to send a check in. Um, and I do agree, I think what we've discovered here, and I don't, maybe not necessarily discovered here, but we've, many of us have already known, is a lot of these fees, uh, for other businesses are not high enough. As I've mentioned, some of them have been the same for 25 or 30 years. Um, they are not meeting, they are not covering the cost of it, of the inspections, I assume. But this, as has been mentioned by several of the members, it was, this was a top identified priority for the council, was reevaluating our entire fee structure for every, everything that we apply a fee to in the city of Norman, we want to know, is that the true cost of the service that we're providing to these people? And if it's less, then we need to, or, uh, we, the fee needs to be less. If it's more, then we need to charge more. So, I think there may be some circumstances where we find out that some of our fees are too high, and we need to lower them. I think, what I suspect is gonna happen, we're gonna find out that a whole bunch of them are way too low, and we're gonna have to raise them. Uh, so, I'm gonna support this tonight, um, but I do want to make sure everybody understands, in my committee, we are gonna be looking, starting again, last Thursday of this month, um, at the zoning issue in regard to, um, special use permit, um, and where processors and, um, others can be located by right and all those types of things. So, we're gonna keep looking at that. And I think this fee issue is something, um, in regard to the cannabis industry specifically, is something we're gonna have to keep, like, we can't just say, okay, we've done it, now we can forget about it, move on. Because I, I just, there's been so many changes and new things in this industry, and I suspect it's gonna con, continue to change. Um, you know, with the next legislative session, who knows what might come out of there. So, um, I think this is something the council has to be evaluating on a yearly basis. And, um, this may be the fee now, but next year, when renewals come about, again, I'm not entirely convinced where that 450, what it actually even pays for. So, um, I'm gonna support this tonight, but I can guarantee that as long as I'm on council, we are gonna continue reevaluating this and making sure that it is equitable and applied fairly to all businesses. If cannabis industry is paying this much, then, um, for similar, same inspections that have been pointed out, then other businesses are gonna need to pay the same amount as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, Councilmember Holman has mentioned that in community planning and transportation, they'll start tackling the zoning issue. I'm currently chairing Finance, and that is the third Thursday, and we will continue our discussion of all of our licensing and fees this month. Um, the, actually, this month, I think we'll probably outline the framework of how we're gonna do that, because it's a lot, and, but we need to do it, and everyone here has said that. So, uh, I don't want anyone to feel like we're going after the cannabis industry. It's just new. And we, we don't have new industries, like, sprout out, uh, every once in a while. So, we're, we really are doing the best we can. I hope you all recognize how much time we have put into this. We didn't just come out and do something. We have looked at it again, and again, and again. And we have committed to you tonight that we will continue to do that, because we're committed to getting it right. We, we see the value in how it helps people. We see the value in our business community, and, uh, we can do it right. It's just, we're gonna take our, our due diligence and time in doing so. So, um, is there, did, any final comments? Nope, that's it. The motion on the floor is to amend the license fees as follows. $600 initial and $450 renewal for dispensaries and storage facilities, $900 initial and renewal for growers, processors, and testing laboratories, and 500 initial and renewal for education and research facilities. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Motion to amend the fees passes unanimously.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding the ordinance as amended? This is the full ordinance. Seeing none. Everyone's but, is your button's working? Okay, all right, just make sure. All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the ordinance as amended. Are there any public comments?
Since we don't get, we get to respond after council responds, I just want to point out that the piece of data that everyone's basing this on, all the hours spent by council for these fee calculations, what was notably absent in that presentation was the average amount of time for each one of those staff functions that is spent on non-cannabis businesses. So, calling that a data-driven decision, I think is maybe at least not using complete data. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Are there any final comments from council regarding the ordinance as amended? Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I'll be quick-ish. Um, so, and I guess I will make a couple of personal comments. So, it's an interesting phenomenon for me to be on this side, like, legislating about cannabis, because, um, last year, but when it was still illegal, um, for anybody to have it on their person or smoke it, and we decriminalized it, before we decriminalized in Norman, I was, um, knocking doors for 788. And we, I spoke, um, at the rally at Andrews Park last year, and I told my story then about my grandfather, um, who's a veteran and suffers from alcoholism because of, and PTSD be, in like, mixes that with, uh, pharmaceuticals. And so, the cannabis has saved his life. And so, I reiterate, um, that I believe that insurance should be paying for the cost of cannabis for patients. Um, and I think that that would remove some of those issues. Um, and I look forward to what the recreational cannabis industry's gonna look like here in Oklahoma and in Norman. Hopefully, we can do cana tourism. I know that the Cannabis Cup was just here this pa- I know that the Cannabis Cup was just here this past weekend, and it did not get to go, because I was busy, but, so I just want to share that. I don't think anybody up here is anti-cannabis, or I think very pro, like I said, pro autonomy when it comes to what goes into your body, and that includes medicine. And as far as businesses go, I'm not a business owner, so it's really important for me to hear from y'all the impact of what we're doing. I'm a taxpayer, and I pay my taxes, so, and I do hope that the industry, I would like to see the numbers on how we've been impacted since the legalization, and we've, since we've been collecting sales tax from cannabis, I'd be really interested to see how our budget is profiting from that, because the fact that we are actually still experiencing issues, I think we just had a report of, we were 2.3% decline across the city for the month of August, and so if we are receiving a benefit from cannabis, it's significant, because we are still, we're still struggling. And I am ready and eager to revisit some of the impact fees and other development and business fees, such as the food handling permit, $50, I feel like restaurants should be inspected. I visit restaurants all the time, so I'd like for them to be safe and fire, safe, so all of those things, anyway. That'll be all. I just want to kind of express that, you know, we are just trying to do our best for the business community, our patients in Norman, our residents, and our staff, and our budget.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance as amended upon second reading, section by section. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes unanimously.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve emergency section 17. So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve emergency section 17. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the emergency section passes unanimously.
To reject the ordinance on final reading as amended.
So moved. Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Final item of the night that we must vote on, Resolution 1920-32, Extending Appreciation to Our Pal in Ward Four, Bill Hickman. For his outstanding service on the Norman City Council, I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A resolution extending appreciation to Bill Hickman for serving as Ward Four Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of a democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of the government, and whereas the level of government which is closest to the people is that of city government, and whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community and bring their own talents, values, and abilities to the job, and whereas those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities, and whereas these public officials assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands, and whereas Bill Hickman served on the city council representing Ward Four from July 5, 2016, to August 27, 2019, and whereas during his time on city council, Bill Hickman served on the city council Community Planning and Transportation Committee from July 14, 2017, to July 3, 2018, and served as its chair from July 3, 2018, to July 2, 2019, the city council Oversight Committee from July 14, 2017, to July 3, 2018, the Stormwater Citizen Steering Committee, and the Center City Administrative Delay Ad Hoc Committee. And whereas Bill's steadfast advocacy for protection of neighborhoods will be a huge part of his legacy, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Norman that the council of the city of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commends and extends appreciation to Bill Hickman for his service to this community as councilmember for Ward Four, and wishes him well in his future endeavors. Thank you, Bill. Would you like to say a few words, Councilmember?
I want to thank the mayor, Bria, all the councilmembers that I've had the honor to serve with, our wonderful staff here at City Hall. I know there were times that they're like, oh, God, is Hickman not going to ask me a question? And I very much appreciate all the hard work and time and effort that you guys have put in, and it's been a pleasure to serve with all the other elected officials and to work with the staff. I want to thank the seniors and all of my friends, family, and supporters, and people who have been there for me during this journey of being on Norman City Council. I've really enjoyed it. I have a servant heart, I love to serve and to give back to the community, and so it's something I really have enjoyed doing. So I feel very blessed to have this opportunity. I'm really proud of the work that we've accomplished working together, like protecting neighborhoods and putting environmental protections in place, working on Center City, some things along those lines, and wouldn't have been able to make it happen without the support of fellow councilmembers, the staff, and all the citizens. So I want to, at last, thank the people of the city of Norman, and especially the people of Ward Four for their support, and I wish the community the best, and I'm looking forward and very excited to go serve on the Oklahoma Institute Child Advocacy Board with Mr. Joe Dorman and the other nonprofit work that I'm doing, and get back to the practice of law. So thank you all very much, and I really do appreciate this. Thank you.
All right, this is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Hey, hold on one second. We didn't entirely vote on that resolution. We moved and seconded and had some comments, it was great. But now, councilmembers, please cast your votes. Just vote yes for Joe, it's, it's fine. You have to vote.
All votes have been passed, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
All right, thank you for allowing us that moment. Continue, please.
Yeah, Julie Knudsen, Ward Eight, actually, though. I'm here as president of the Norman Seniors Association. And there was more of us, but three hours and people, you know, would kind of disappear. But they took one of things on their way out the door, so this is a little bit lighter than when I brought it in. And I hesitate to do this with Skylar sitting here, because I have an addiction to her expression, "dark side cookies," but these were baked with our love and affection and thankfulness, and we're hoping that you will share with the whole council, which enables me to be addressing the entire council. And we would like you to join us. Our work is not done. Wellness Center is just part of what we are up to. We want to increase our own diversity, our own inclusivity. You and I have had private conversations about how frustrated I am about that. So please join us, hang out with us, we all owe you a beer, or whatever, and have a bag of cookies.
Any other miscellaneous comments? Yeah, pass that down, Bill. Dr. Ellis?
All right, Steve Ellis, still Ward Four, Norman America. The city has a tradition of answering resident questions about items on the consent docket before they've been voted on, provided that a resident asks before the meeting. I sent a message earlier today, late morning, to ask a question that was on consent, because I think there's an interesting issue involving item 41, and I didn't get an answer during the discussion of the consent item, so I was hoping I could get an answer now. So item 41, which is Contract 192040 regarding the planning of Norman Ford Swim and Sports Complex, seems to involve site-specific obligations and requirements that are specific to the site on the UNP TIF. So what I wanted to know was whether or not that was accurate, and whether or not we could use the designs and plans and such that we're contracting for in this contract, even if the city decided not to adopt the current proposal that is currently before the statutory review committee regarding the UNP TIF. And just as an aside on that, I was glad to see some of the old, "we don't knuckle under to threats" spirit earlier this evening. I hope the city can find some of that sort of bring-it-on mojo when it comes to developer threats. I hope they convince you that that's appropriate later. But I think that if the contract that we sign tonight is predicated on following through with the proposed UNP TIF project plan amendments that are currently being considered, the residents of Norman deserve to know that the city council is willing to sort of prejudge those project plan amendments before the required statutory review committee review has been completed, before the required planning commission meeting, before the two required public hearings. So if you guys have already decided, I think that's something that the citizens of Norman should know. Now, if you haven't decided, if this is a contract that would still be useful, even if the project plan amendments don't go through as planned, I think that would also be useful to know. I just want to remind everybody, this was something that was actually on the agenda tonight, so there's nothing wrong with you answering questions about it right now. So you've already voted on it, it was on the agenda, everybody knows that that was one of the items. The question didn't get answered before you voted, but maybe you'd like to clarify for us now. Thank you.
I'll take a shot at that. Our intention is to authorize FSB to begin work immediately on the senior center project, and once the site selection is concluded for the other two facilities, then we would authorize the work to begin on those. Does that help?
Good evening. Hope you have that mouthful of cookies making everybody happy. Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. So I'm going to, I'm just going to, hey, thanks, Bill Hickman. I'm going to repeat some things that I heard tonight, I was very excited as an economist, and then I'll get to my point. We should not give a subsidy to any business. We're stewards of public budgets. Equity is important. Businesses need to pay their fair share. We are not a charity. Something like a violent agreement that all feeds, fees need to be investigated. It becomes a question of priorities and what is important for us as a community. We have a commitment to due diligence. I share your frustration. What is not fair to local businesses? The proposed terms of the UNP TIF. I'm just going to focus on two aspects of the plan. One, providing up to $5 million incentives without requiring strict performance standards, standards that were put in place to stimulate a regional draw, that's the payback for the investment we made in that area. Second, waiving the penalty for not building the lifestyle center. This would be a failure to reimburse taxpayers for the developer's share of the infrastructure that we put in place to support the lifestyle center that they are supposed to build. So if we're going to walk the walk and lead the way in terms of fiscal responsibility, which I sincerely hope we do as a community, we need to make a better deal. We need to make one that's an actual compromise, and we need the one that respects the public trust that was put in place when we made the deal in the first place, and one that doesn't sell out our local businesses. So I hope it's not too late to take a look at that and make a better deal.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, council, my staff, the audience watching at home. My name is Evan Dunn, and I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue, Ward Seven. Okay. I understand what happened earlier. Bill, it was an honor sitting between you and our mayor. The moment I remember most is when we were at that, the trails, and we only had one mic. And I think, Bria, you spoke, and I said, can I borrow the mic? And then I spoke, and then, Bill, it was your turn, and, oh, here you go, here's a mic. And we all spoke from the same mic. It was a good memory. I want to thank Steve, too. I think he brought up some really good points. How did we do the contract? What firms submitted responses to the RFP? I think that's a question. Funding, I think that the reason I don't focus too much on funding is because I think that there is an inspirational component. I think that there are people in this community who have capital. They have, they are wealthy. They, they don't feel a connection, though, to this community. And I think that we ought to add an eighth percent tax increase with the eighth that we're doing, or that we want to do, so that each one of you gets a portion of whatever else comes in for your personal slush fund. Let's call it that. Let's call it what it can be, because you're each going to have projects, there are each going to be people in your wards who have ideas, who want to do things. Now, I wouldn't be saying that, because I've got a United States Patent and Trademark Office confirmation on Uthrones, and these are them. There's three of them. You saw the podium that I brought in that one day? There's another one, they all work together, and... Thank you, thank you. Think about WPA, think about the underemployed, think about all of the people who could, just in their spare time, be punching out Uthrones, because kiddos all over the...
We're going to end this thing right now. My name is James Montgomery Johnston. I live on South Webster, and I'm in Ward Four. I have three things, I'm going to make this brief. Number one, for the past seven years, Nadine and our senior group have been adamant about trying to get a senior center or a wellness center, however you call it. Now we've got an opportunity to do something better than Oklahoma City, and I appreciate the city council for having resolved that. You guys got to be relaxed. The first time you went to your summer retreat, senior center wasn't even on the, on the, on the table, so that was a good thing, and you got other things going. So my number-one appreciation is for this progressive council and identifying allocation. We've got a general amount of money, which is not enough, but the staff has been really excellent in all this. excellent in all this, in that they've identified opportunities, and I appreciate our new city manager not allowing change orders to just slip under the $40,000 radar, which was going on on a regular basis. So my number-one thing is, thank you very much for, you know, this opportunity for the Senior Center. Number two, we need more money. Where's it coming from? Mr. Francisco over here is about to throw in a third tranche. His second tranche saved us millions of dollars. We've got money coming back, maybe on James Garner, and why? I mean, I could be wrong, Anthony, I'm sorry, but he did. I mean, the interest on the second tranche was significant savings, and that just kind of went somewhere. There's more money to put into the Senior Center, and we all recognize that, you know, I mean, a vibrant community is gonna have, you know, healthy seniors. I mean, what gets 'em out of bed? Sauna, saltwater pool, little pickleball court? These are vital things. We look at what's happening, the precedence has been set in Oklahoma City. So I appreciate the staff, and I appreciate everybody that has worked hard to get us where we need to be, and that is, that's really a good start. How is it that we can take the Norman Forward extra money and save it?
Ten more seconds, ma'am.
For the Senior Center? And I'm asking for just a little bit more, like the contingency...
...but it's not gonna be very sweet. So as for the last resolution that you guys just passed, or like voted on, I'm pretty sure that somewhere in the verbiage it said something about "on behalf of all citizens" and "as a Ward Four resident," I have not been happy with my representation. I know, and many of you know, that my ward rep did not live where they stated they live, within our ward, and they also censored us repeatedly because they did not like the dissenting opinion. So I am personally thrilled that tonight is here. And then, one last thing, how one of you spoke to Jeff French after he got up and spoke was absolutely disgusting, and everyone should be embarrassed.
Are miscellaneous comments for Council? Kate, or Councilmember Beerman, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I've been struggling with this issue with a trust fund, that basically there's been...
Can you introduce yourself again?
Oh, John Priestley, over on the west side there by Cedar Ridge. There's been some news, is, well, there's been several websites taken down that belong to a certain, what we call, a con man. They've changed from a 404 error to a 410 error, which I don't understand all the HTTP language, but it says, "The account is under investigation or found in violation of medium rules." Well, that's probably good news. The bad news is, you know, I notice next to, well, Dick Talley's, Sam Talley's, there's a new, Main Street's All Attorneys. How do we regulate them? Because I've had something stricken from the Oklahoma Supreme Court, where when somebody says one thing once and the exact opposite a second time, it's picked the lie, that's... they are guilty of a crime called perjury by inconsistent statements, but unfortunately, the Supreme Court strickens that. And I'm just wondering, you know, talk about a money industry, how much are we taxing them?
Any other public comment? All right, Councilmember Beerman.
So first, I just want to say, Bill, I'm sad that this is gonna be your last night. I have learned a lot from you about digging deep into policy and crafting amendments and looking for the details that others might miss. So I'm really gonna miss that, because it made me a better council member, and so I'm really appreciative of that, and so I hope you will not be a stranger. I will probably be calling or texting to be like, "I think we need to work on this, but I don't really know how I'm supposed to work on it, so give me some advice." So be prepared for that. And so now, kind of back to White Paper Public Policy Hour with Kate Beerman. Every two weeks, I like to talk about a new way that I'm looking at policy, because I spent a lot of time in college actually picking apart policy and making policy, but not how to necessarily think about policy. And apropos for tonight, apparently, one of the things that I've been thinking and reading about is access to justice. So more than 100 million Americans experience some sort of civil justice issue every year: wage theft, eviction, debt collection, domestic violence, medical treatment, et cetera. And it's the result of those problems not being resolved effectively, such as homelessness, poverty, illness, that can cause real devastation to American families. So it's not the issue itself that causes it, it's the way those issues are resolved that causes the problem. And the fact that so many civil justice problems receive no legal attention of any kind is not necessarily just an issue of unmet legal need, although that is part of it, but also a failure to answer the question of what kind of assistance do people need with the issues that they are facing. It's an issue of both restricted access and also unequal application of justice. Both of those play a part in that. Many do not see their justice problems as being legal in nature to begin with, or they believe that they understand their situation and the options they have available to them. But, you know, a lot of this comes down to the way that lower courts deal with small legal issues like wage theft or eviction, because docket and outcome reviews of lower courts show that they are quite lawless, particularly if one party is not represented by an attorney. Judicial staff sometimes don't follow the law about who has the burden of proof, they fail to apply the rules about what qualifies as evidence or hearsay, and they have a tendency to ignore the right of both sides to adequately present their case. So we can address this through systemic reforms, like requiring debt buyers to prove the claims that they are filing against someone. It would clear hundreds of thousands of baseless claims off the lower court dockets every single year, and you can imagine how much time this costs average, everyday Americans to have to go to court and contest the claim against them. So, this is an issue of exclusion and inequality, and so when we look at this from a public policy frame, we have to think about, as policymakers, not just what the issues are, but what tools do people need to address those issues? Because it's not all just as easy as throw them a lawyer and they'll be able to figure it out. Sometimes, it's actually too much clogging of the legal system, and we need to kind of refocus and look at it. Throw my pen at someone now. And especially when it comes to issues like discrimination, like we were dealing with tonight. A good way to provide some legal or judicial remedies to people who don't necessarily have another option is through our Civil Rights Ordinance. So, that's something that I have been thinking a lot about. I'm hoping that over the course of my tenure as Chair of the Oversight Committee, we can start addressing some of these issues. I'd love to work on reducing the fees that payday lenders are allowed to charge, ambulance insurance, looking at ways to make people's lives better or reduce their medical debt, or, you know, find ways to stop the cycle of constantly being in debt and needing a next payday loan to cover the one from previously. So that's the frame that I'm gonna start looking at issues, along with all the other ways that I try and look at it. And I just, I really like, I really like the academia on this issue. Some of it is really, really great, and it causes me to think about issues in a new light, and so I'm hoping that these little mini TED Talks are not overly boring and that maybe you take away some little nugget of information that helps you see the world in a different way. So, thanks, everyone.
I would like to say, I want to just give my thanks to Bill Hickman for your service. It's been an honor and pleasure to serve with you, and I hope that we're able to use you as a reference person, as your expertise has been very valuable to me. So, thank you.
So, I first want to say that I'm, again, just humbled and honored to get to have been a part of the Human Rights Commission, the Human Rights Ordinance, not the Commission, but passing the Commission's ordinance. And, yeah, it was just an amazing experience, and I'd also like to say, while I haven't gotten much time with you, Bill, I have appreciated the time that we've sat next to each other up here and continue to be friends. And I wish you happy trails on the new endeavors. Ward Three, our last Flood Plane Committee meeting is in here, again, on Wednesday, September 4th, at 6:00 PM. So, that's the last public meeting. If you would like to have your questions answered, if you got a letter in the mail, please come up here so that you can talk with staff and a rep from OWRB and FEMA. And I think that's all I have for tonight. It's getting late, and my brain's a little bit tired.
I just want to say thank you again to everybody. I think the new Ward Four councilpeople, I had some people messaging me, asking me who's gonna be the new councilperson, and I think that that's gonna be done on September 10th. So, stay tuned. That will be when the new Ward Four councilperson will be sworn in, and I'm just, again, thank you to everybody, and I've really enjoyed the ride, and I'm looking forward to the future.
Thanks, Bill, for, I don't know, helping me, being the guy that digs into all the boring stuff for me-ish, and teaching me how to critically think when I look at something that comes across our desk, so to speak, and, no, we don't have a desk, but I didn't really have those skills whenever I got here, so I attribute a lot of that to you, so thank you. And Beerman over there, they're my research team. So anyways, thank you for your service, and thank you for weathering the crazy storms and pushing me to be brave in some of the face of some of the things we did, which I think were huge. The reason why we got to speak with OG&E the way we did today in our study session was because Mr. Hickman, Kate Beerman, Lucia Carjala, myself, I wasn't very brave that night. I remember very specifically being, wanting to vomit and cry at the same time, because I knew we were doing something big, and we were pushing OG&E to pay attention to us. However this ends up, we've had a very real conversation with a very big company as a city, so that I appreciate, and I learned a lot from it. The other thing I want to say is to the Human Rights Commission, for all their work, I know they're all going home now and everybody's in bed, but to the Senior Center folks, thank you for coming and staying tonight. Nadine, I'm impressed. You go, girl. But I've been, there's been a couple of times when I've been sitting here and I've said, "I'm glad I'm sitting at the table, because I know I'm gonna make the right decision." The Human Rights Commission ordinance tonight was one of those times whenever I knew I was gonna make the right decision. Another time was when we voted on a name change of a street. I knew that I needed to be sitting here, so I'm glad I did. So I appreciate everybody that's given me the opportunity to do that. We have ward meetings happening again. We dropped them for the summer, because nobody comes. So, second Saturday of September, we will be at Thunderbird Baptist Church across from Clear Bay entrance, so anybody who wants to come chat with me, I will have Maribel, the intern. Also, I know there's a couple interns back there that are just rocking it tonight, so thank you very much. And I'll have Maribel with me at the second Saturday ward meeting for Ward Five. I hope to see everybody there.
I want to pile on Mr. Hickman. I had the privilege of working with him, being inspired by him during 22 months of the Stormwater Committee, and valuable contributions as the liaison from council to that committee. He kept our heads on straight, said what he needed to, when he needed to. I really appreciate it. I also appreciate times, over literally the past several years, where I've had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with Bill, and giving me perspectives that I didn't have. I appreciated his time. I guess now, we're starting the 10th of September, I'm no longer Bill Junior on the council. But thank you, Bill, very, very much. I'd also like to compliment my colleague, Stephen Holman, who, coming into this marijuana debate, I really didn't know very much. I confess that. And Stephen recognized my ignorance and took me to school. I spent several hours with him over this past weekend, just talking about issues, his perspectives, the ins and outs and so on, and while I still don't claim expertise, I'm much farther ahead, and I thank him personally for that. Two other things. I attended a Citizens Comment Session for the new Emergency Operations Center, Emergency Communications Center, that will go up on East Robinson. It's an absolutely worthwhile project and a potential solution to the shortage we see of dispatchers in the Emergency Communications Branch. They're down, I forget, it's either four or five people in that hotbed job, meaning folks are doubling up, they're working a lot of overtime. It's a long-term solution, but a solution to get, it is a solution to get those people above ground and into some reasonable working space. So that project is proceeding at pace, and I'm grateful to all that have worked on it. And finally, I do believe in getting out and about, and one of the out and abouts I did this past week was spend some time at the Fire Academy. And you have to attend some of the classes to appreciate what those cadets are going through in training to become some of Norman's finest. It's an incredibly difficult training syllabus, and I sat in on a couple of things on hazmat training, which is vitally important in this city, particularly with the train tracks running through it, but really in any city, it's really important, and our people are getting excellent training. Through the good offices of Travis King, our fire chief, I had the opportunity to observe live fire training, and he got me into a bunker suit and into the fire room at about 600, 700 degree temperatures, and handed me a hose and said, "Here, do this." It was quite an education, and really brought home to me just how difficult this training is and how important the products of that training are to this city. So I thank you, Travis, and compliments to you and your training team and to the cadets.
Okay, so first, I do just want to thank everybody watching at home, everybody that came to the meeting tonight, and especially all of you that are still here. We appreciate it, it is valued to have people come and tell us what they think, and tell us when we're wrong sometimes, and all those things are important to us. I do want to appreciate Councilmember Scanlon for stopping by at Friendly Market on Saturday, spending a couple hours with me. Let him tell, let me tell him the whole story about Friendly Market, and he got to see our museum showcase that has all our evidence pieces in it. But to his original point, helping to understand this issue that we're dealing with in regard to cannabis, it is new for a lot of people, and so I appreciate Councilmember Scanlon stopping by and talking to anybody else. Anybody is always welcome to stop by Friendly Market, and I'd be happy to talk with you about that issue, or any issue, really. People stop by all the time and talk to me about city stuff, so. And on that note, I do want to mention that there are some proposed changes to Campus Corner in regard to a safety plan that the Police Department's put together. It's pretty, some significant changes, and we had a meeting about that the other day in committee, that'll be coming to the full council soon. But I am at the deli, working the door at the deli, pretty much every Monday night from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, so you don't have to wait till then to talk to me about... So you don't have to wait till then to talk to me about Campus Corner, but I am there every Monday night from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody that has any questions about what we're proposing to do on Campus Corner in regard to that safety plan. It's pretty good, some pretty good points about that plan, I think. There's a couple concerns I have about it, but anyway, feel free to come talk to me about it. Last, I would just, as others have mentioned, extend my thanks to Councilmember Hickman. You and Councilmember Clark, Mayor Clark have been on, you both were elected at the same time, so the two of you have been on the next longest after me. And so we've done a lot of stuff together over the last three years. We've served on a couple different committees that were pretty complicated issues to deal with. And, and I would just note, too, that Councilmember Hickman was one of the more vocal people when I was going through my legal issue, one of the more vocal in support of what I was dealing with. And that was really appreciated. I mean, a lot of people were very supportive, but to have someone that I worked with up here express that pretty openly was appreciated, helped get through that. So I appreciate all the work you've done. As I mentioned, this is my hometown, so the work that you've done to improve this place for others, for kids like me growing up here, is definitely appreciated, and I think your perspective will be missed up here. So thank you, Bill. And thank you all, we'll see you next time.
Hello, or as I like to say, hey, y'all. Thank you, Councilmember Hickman, for your service to the nation and to the city, and it's been a fun year with you and the rest of the team, obviously. Thank you to my fellow councilmembers for your service, and I appreciate all of you. Anytime that there's an issue, I feel like I can reach out to you, you as well, Councilmember Hickman, and I appreciate you, and I do wish you well on your next journey. I, I think we'll miss you sometimes. This is what I said when Robert left, too, sometimes. But yes, thank you very much for your service, and you can always, you know, if there's any issue that you don't feel comfortable with, you know, you can talk to us about it, or you can come and hang out with us, just like everybody else. So thank you all for coming and being with us tonight and watching us make progress towards becoming a more inclusive community, a more equitable community. I appreciate all of you guys, I tried to say, all of y'all, all y'all, all y'all. I appreciate all y'all, okay? So, thank you. I'm tired. I think everybody here knows I work from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM because politics doesn't pay the bills, except for our interns. Thank you all for being here.
They make more than us.
They make more than we do. And I'm not jealous, it's fine. If you ever want to trade spaces, though, let me know. It's fun. So we get the comfy chairs, actually, so there's that. The next ward meeting for Ward Eight will be on September 29th, which is a Sunday, as always, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM at Fire Station 7. It's going to be pretty environmentally focused. We're gonna have some members from the Sierra Club to discuss the Ready for 100 resolution that the City of Norman passed in, was it April last year? Last year. And, you know, on that note, we did have a study session earlier this evening with OGNI. We had a presentation from them and our franchise agreement, and I said this two weeks ago, I'm very serious about our commitment to environmental sustainability in the City of Norman and the progress that we're making, and we really, we are a city of leaders and innovators and all of those things, and we have to set the precedent. We cannot be afraid to make our demands known, and I think that we did tonight. And I want to high five Councilmember Patron for having my back on the no coal, basically, getting, stepping away from coal in our franchise agreement. And so we're asking for that, and I think that, you know, the more pressure we have from the public on these things will make it easier for us because we need, we need to make, making those commitments for our future generations, for my generation, and for, if I choose to have children, for my children's generation. And so, very serious about that and those commitments to quality air, land, and water and quality of life that we are all committed to. So thank you all, and have a great night.
All right. I have had a long day, so I will do my best to keep this short. First of all, thank you to all of you. It's such an honor to work with this team who is respectful and passionate and dedicated, and thank you to all of you at home as well. It's the residents that make this city great and how engaged you are and passionate you are. And we're, we're volunteers residents as well, so it means a lot to have you engaged and I hope you continue that. I think that is something that really makes Norman special, because we have a lot of people that come regularly, the people who follow the issues and come out and make sure that they're heard, and I appreciate that, especially on novel issues like medical marijuana. So we'll, we'll keep working at it, I promise. Same thing with OGNI and sustainability, same thing with human rights and civil rights, and, and we're, we're not done here. We're not. We're just getting started here in Norman. But speaking of just getting started, football season is here. Am I right? Three words: sales, tax, revenue. So we actually have a really fun weekend coming up. If you haven't gotten to do an adults-only night out at the pool, I think it's the last one at Westwood this Friday, and they have a little bar set up, right? At the what?
Golf course.
At the golf course. Oh, okay, so it's an adults-only night, it should be fun. But then Campus Corner is doing kickoff on the corner. In case you didn't hear, the game is actually Sunday night, and so they're making a whole weekend of fun out of it. So you could go hang out on Campus Corner, listen to live music, and then head to the Miller District, the historic Miller District, for Porch Fest, which is also going on this weekend. And then the game is on Sunday and Labor Day is on Monday. So I've said it before and I'll say it again, if you're bored in this town, it's your own fault. All right? And then the last event that I'll mention, for those of you that don't know, we are the County Seat. And the County Fair is here, it is next weekend, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So get out there, look at some cows and crafts and enjoy your neighbors. They always have a great slate of events, and I really appreciate our partners over at the county. So with that, that's all I have. City Manager Pile, do you have anything?
Just a quick note, and thank you to Councilmember Hickman. When an individual is willing to throw their hat in the ring and run for public office and are recognized by their community as having leadership skills, they elect you to serve, you earn the monocle of your honor. And I'll see you around town and you will always be your honor, and I thank you.
Yeah, the Oklahoma Institute for Child Advocacy is lucky to have you. They really are. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.